It's a long ways.
Oh, yeah. Trust me, I think you're right on the other side. This is actually a staging area. I think they call it like a staging area or something. But I call it a dangerous area.
And we're not waiting for anybody else, right? So are we ready to go? Okay, all right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the North Bend City Council Work Session for Monday, April 12th, 2021. We're going to begin here at 6:00 PM. First line item is to call the meeting to order. And number two is we have a training that we're going to be getting for the League of Oregon Cities. And this will be training on North Bend roles and responsibility of our municipal offices. So we'll go ahead and I will give the floor to you. Begin.
Thanks. Hello, everybody. I'm Patty Molhle. Is everybody okay if I take it off? Just try to be nice. Okay. I haven't been told that you can hear me just fine with it on, though. Apparently I can project. So I'm here. I'm going to talk about roles and responsibilities, kind of incorporate it into other things that I think that everybody should know in terms of being a council. A little bit of background from me for those of you that I haven't met yet. So I spent 15 years as an in-house city attorney for a city in the Midwest. We were a population of about 80,000. We were a university town, so we had about another 40,000 students on top of that. It was a little bit different government structure than here. I worked in a strong mayor form of government, which is set up a little bit more like the federal government, wherein the elected mayor is also the chief executive officer of the city and can actually veto legislation and all of that stuff. I've been in Oregon for about five years. And one of the things that my department does is we are kind of the lead primary trainers. So we teach on basic stuff. So I was just in Kokil teaching on public records and public meetings law. They were not bored to death. They assured me that they all stayed awake the whole time. And then I do more customized trainings like this, coming and doing roles and responsibilities training where I target and specifically focus on your actual governing documents and kind of meld that with best practices. And then for city councils that are also struggling, we do facilitation and mediation services. And we also do goal setting and stuff like that. So it's well, not as much time traveling in the last 15 months as normal. But in non-pandemic times, my department's on the road usually five to six times a month, absent out over the state. So that's kind of my general background. Can I ask if you all would mind introducing yourselves? I know some of you, but I don't know all.
I'll begin. Is the mic up here? It's making sounds. It's Larry. Hi, Larry.
How are you doing?
That's where that's coming from. So we're going to go ahead and do some introductions. I'll start with myself, Larry, and then we'll bat it to you. So my name's Jessica Inglekey. I'm the newly elected mayor. It's been six months. I don't know if I can say newly elected anymore. And I actually grew up in this community. I graduated from our local high school. And like as you leave, you can probably see a portrait of me out there from 30 years ago when I was one of our town's July Jubilee princesses. So I have a long history here with the community, but I also did leave for 20 years and came back, but I brought two kids with me and a husband. And we're really happy that you're here today. We really want to work together as a council and be efficient. So as many, you know, this is, I think this is a really good thing. So welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, did you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Larry Garbo and I'm Neil Manon Block.
It's nice to meet you, sir.
Been on the council for 20-plus years.
Yeah. And Larry's day job, he's an accountant. So he's in the middle of tax season. So he had to kind of strategize tonight.
Your job sounds like my version of hell, so.
So we'll go ahead and go around in a circle and go to Councilor Slater over here.
Oh, me?
Yes.
Tim Slater. I came here actually for my business career as my forest management degree and worked for Warehouse Timberlands for about 35 years in a variety of capacities that way. Most recently, I've been the executive director of the chamber the last 14 years. Total time council-wise is about 26 years with a 14-year hiatus in the middle. But I believe in city government and I believe the, it's the best form of representation that the people have and you get the best feedback on a regular basis. Of course, I've been with the League of Oregon Cities piece on the board since 2014.
Councilor Slater and I are very familiar with each other. We traveled across the state. He was a president and I almost killed him when I emptied an elk.
Oh, no.
Elk running across the road at twilight.
These vehicles brakes were exceptionally well.
Susanna Nordoff, and I moved here in 2005 to work for an engineering firm. Have a degree in civil engineering and a former prior degree in urban planning. But I didn't find that I liked it that well, so I took a detour into plant operations and worked in nuclear and hydro for a number of years and finished the engineering degree when Trojan shut down. And so I'm familiar with various types of civil engineering, not an expert in any, but I've worked on a number of different types of projects. And I really appreciate it and I'm very interested in infrastructure. So, thank you. Philip, good to have you here.
Thanks. Nice to meet you.
Pat Gall. I was on 62 years North Bend, born and raised. I was on the council prior, took two years off and for some odd reason I got back on. But anyway, I'm the terminal manager for the export facility right over the hill. Longtime North Bender and hoping we get something out of this deal. Thank you.
You're welcome. I will say, when people, if people call you by your first name, don't be offended if I answer because my whole family calls me Pat. So every time somebody says Pat, I'm likely to answer.
Well, there you go. All right.
I'm Eric Gleason. I'm the, I guess I'm a fairly newly elected as well. I guess what, you said six months?
I think it's been almost six months.
We made it. Born and raised here, left for the military, served eight years in the Navy, came back with a various amount of jobs. Casino security, welder, postal worker, veteran service officer. Now I'm the assistant director of the health department and public information officer for the county response to COVID-19. So I haven't really had a whole lot going on.
Did you take the job right before the pandemic started?
No.
Yeah, he thought it was going to be a slum job.
When they told me I was the PIO when I, when I took the position, it was about four years prior to a pandemic. So that was, that was a rude awakening. But we're excited to get some, some hints and some tips on how to make our, our council a little more effective.
If I have to do it, you have to do it.
I'm Jane Stevins. I'm legal.
I'm Bill Richardson. Born and raised here, been on the council 16 years, council president presently. I actually run the local garbage company and I've been there 41 years. Yeah, love being on the council. This is a great council, a new council. A lot of us, a lot of us have been here a while and it's going to be a really, really good council, I have a feeling. It's just the dynamics have changed quite a bit from the prior council. And I see a lot of positives coming.
Great. Nice to meet you. Um, did you want to introduce yourself too?
I'm David Maliron. I'm the city administrator. I've been here six months. This is the city I manage. Government's sort of my second or third career, I don't know which. I was actually a investigative journalist for 20 years and retired. And then did some other stuff like running a technology company in between. And I've been in municipal government since 2008.
So as we do the training, I will say it's going to work a lot better, particularly this type of training, if you guys engage. So if you've got questions, if we need to take like a, go down a side path and have a discussion, that's going to be more interesting than you sitting in your chairs listening to me talk at the next couple of hours. I'm not a huge fan of like meaning to raise your hands. I know that doesn't go as far in our practice, but we're small enough and it's clear there's a pause and you just say if you kind of got a question, happy to do that. It will be much more interesting. And so we're going to go from there.
So you're okay with us asking questions and, okay, we're going to engage the heck out of you.
Absolutely. Feel free. I just came from Kokil and we finished five minutes early and they took that as a liberty to ask me completely unrelated questions. So please feel free to ask questions and if you want to have a dialogue, let's have a dialogue.
Yeah.
Okay. So I call this particular training that I developed for you guys 10 habits of effective city councils. In reality, there's probably 100 and a million habits, 100 million habits that you all could do to be super effective. But when, I work a lot with, they're attorney in my office, but we kind of study all the things that we like that work well with really great councils. We think we can kind of like find a top 10. Like these are the 10 that we really focus on. I'm also a big fan of light slideshows because I believe in not leaving to you. So they may seem light, but there will be content behind each of them. Also, I'm not super artsy crapcy like, so this, 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 putting this together is a win for me. So the very first thing is, in my, the number one thing councils have to do is they have to figure out how to work together as a team. A lot of times people ignore the fact that a city council actually has to become a team and not just the council. The entire city has to come together as a team in order to be successful. And you can't operate independently or separately from one another. You're going to have to work together. And as part of that team, you're going to have sub-teams and sub-dynamics. And we've got to figure out a way to meld that so that we can all kind of work together. And there's some tips or tools that I like to talk about when we do this. And I like to start off this training by making you all participate, whether you like it or not. I believe in the Socratic method. So this is a photo of a plane full of people. And I would ask you guys if this is a group or a team. Okay, can you answer it? So now you have to tell me why.
Well, there are team members in this group, but this entire component of people are not on the same team, right? They, they may be in the same location, but they're not a physical group together, like a team together. They are just grouped together. Now, the flight attendants would be part of the team, right? That. So that's sub-population of this group.
So can I ask you a follow-up question?
No.
I'm going to anyway. Sign up for this. Okay, so what, so the team, I agree. What makes the flight attendants a team as opposed to everybody else? Is there a characteristic? Do they have something in common? What makes them a team?
Well, they have a common goal, I think. They are working to make sure that the passengers on that flight enjoy or at least have some comfort during the time that they are with them. The rest of the people are just trying to get where they're going. So the team is focused on making sure the customer service aspect is, you know, made possible for the rest of them.
Absolutely. Anybody else have a different thought or opinion?
Well, I can see a simple similarities that they both have like badges. So they're, you can identify them as personality aircraft. And then one other thing, it looks like to me that some people are engaged with different things going on. One guy's watching the TV screen, other people are videotaping the person behind this lady and then the other lady's engaging with the gentleman one-on-one. And some people look like they're not paying any attention at all.
So do you think, is there a way in this scenario where the entire plane could become a team?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
In an emergency?
Right.
In the event of a water landing.
Right? Because they're all going to have to come together for?
To achieve a common goal.
It'll be chaos.
Right. And the reason I like the plane example, there are a million photos that people will use when we talk about groups versus teams, is because I think city councils, particularly every two or four year moving turnover, I think it's ludicrous to assume that you are a team automatically. I think for the most part, you start off as passengers on the plane. You're all trying to get to the same destination, but you may not have the same goals in mind. You don't really know each other yet. You haven't developed trust. You don't have decided like what is the actual mission that you're working on. You're just a group of people sitting together in the same brackets. But just like the plane and the event of an emergency, although we don't want a total emergency with city councils, you guys can figure out a way to come together and develop those common goals, common interests, and actually develop a plan to go forward. And I would ask everybody, it's not as hard as a picture, if you had to choose, which do you think is more effective, a group or a team?
Team.
Team.
Team. Okay. I'm not going to call on you anymore. Why would you say?
Well, you got it out of the way earlier.
Okay, I get it. A group acknowledges the member, the other members present and facing inward, facing each other. A team has a, has a joint goal, has a, has a goal and they, they're, they're progressing toward that goal. There have, there's a start, a middle, and an end. They have, they have a goal to accomplish. So it's more than just a group. A group's a cocktail party. You know, a, whereas a team is different than that, more, more developed, I guess I would say.
And I've found that being on council prior and then having a battle. But being with some of the team members I was on with before, there's times, just since I've been back on, that an item had come up and we were able to talk about it. Well, you remember, you remember, Bill, remember three years ago it was like this? So that's working really well for us, in my opinion.
Good. Everybody else agree teams are better than groups?
The, the team actually needs all the elements within it. And there are different parts that people provide and that enables you to have the full product and reach the solution or the, or the results you want to get to. So you don't have to be everything, but within your team, you start to be, we get everything together that way.
I like that concept. I think that's right. And what's hard, I think sometimes, particularly in politics, and we can't ignore the fact that you all are in politics, even if it's non-partisan politics at the local level, that sometimes politics almost get in the way of being a team, right? Because you may have different competing interests or odds. And if we're being brutally honest, the political climate today probably isn't as cohesive or friendly as it was 20 years ago. And so it's harder to build those team dynamics because we have bigger hurdles to overcome when we're in the political setting. But I think that also means it's more important to find a way to overcome them because you have bigger challenges, right? This isn't a group project in high school where we have to figure out how to successfully analyze, you know, a book that we read. You've got to figure out how to supply clean drinking water to a couple thousand people, right? So it's more important that you overcome those barriers and find those goals. So the next slide I like is kind of identifying some of the key differences between groups and teams. I don't have my reading glasses, so I'm going to chain and look down. So groups are really, as you all said, they're kind of consisting of people who are independent of one another. Somebody else already said it, they have independent tasks and their work product is evaluated and valued independently from one another. And from my perspective, when you look at the difference, when you look under a team, one of the biggest reasons, I think, whether you want to be a team or not, you will be a team as far as the citizens are concerned. You are not going to be judged by your individual efforts on city council. You're going to be judged by your group effort. Nine times out of 10, when there's an unflattering opinion about the city council in North Bend in the newspaper, it's not signaling out councillor A, it's not signaling out the mayor, it's saying the whole city council just mucked this whole thing up. Or it's the city council did this amazing thing and we were able to accomplish this. And so when I talk to city councils in particular, whether you want to be a team or not, that's how your citizens are going to see you. And so you might as well have the other attributes of a team. You might as well establish those common goals. You might as well identify your specific roles and play those roles. Because if you're going to be judged as a team, you might as well make the benefits of it. You've got to live with the negative part of it. You need, you need to embrace kind of the positive aspects of it.
And part of that even goes a little deeper is, is each of us have connections in this city. Being a team, we get concerns and comments from all the different citizens of North Bend and we all have to put that together and come up with a solution.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And my guess is it's small enough that you get that feedback even when you don't want to. So when you're just running the question, sort of getting out of it, you're probably stopped five or six times, right? And they're going to tell you what you're doing right sometimes. And they're always going to tell you what you're doing bad.
Yep.
Is that fair? And my understanding is you guys have been wrapping up or wrapping up your strategic planning sessions, adopting your goals and stuff. How did that go generally? Pretty good?
I think well.
Well, I will say your city manager was nice enough to share it with me, really, in my opinion, solid goals. And it looks like you guys did a really strong process. We do a lot of team building and goal setting with other cities. And I would, I would say you guys did an excellent job because it looks really, really straight and tight forward, which I think is important.
And achievable.
Yes, which is the number one thing that most cities miss when they set their goals.
Exactly.
Right? We want a new water plant that costs $45 million, but we have absolutely no money and no mechanism to get it. The other thing that I think, and I think this touches on different roles and responsibilities, is that teams are exceptionally good at maximizing your strengths and your weaknesses. Because not everybody's going to excel in the same way and that's okay. You need to find out what your strengths are, what your strengths are, and what your weaknesses are and your weaknesses are. And we need to marry them all together so that we can carry each other who are weaker than us and we can let those who are stronger in certain areas take the lead. That's not always true in group settings, right? A lot of times you have people who want to shine and so they're not part of the team per se. It's working all together so that you can develop synergy and be effective as a single unit. Kind of, I always, this is always a dangerous question sometimes, but I think you guys have already said you're doing well, so I'm going to ask it. Would you guys say that you guys are a team, a group, or getting close to being to a team because you're still relatively in your council?
I think we're getting closer. I do. I think that we still have some differences of individual opinions on things. And I think that with work and with training that we can get where we need to go. You know, everybody can't be quarterback. Everybody can't have the basketball and shoot every shot. So we have to kind of share the, share the pain and the, and the wins.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
I was just saying, you know, we've probably been working together just about, you know, five months or so. So we haven't had a lot of big things come open or come to us. And, you know, so it's still new. It's probably almost too new to say.
And I think that's fair. What I, what I encourage people, particularly new councils, is if you know that you want to be, if you recognize that you need to be a team and you're actively working towards a team, then just be patient because it will come. Because key elements of, of teams is one, knowing all of your roles that you're supposed to play. That takes time, right? You can't learn that instantly. You are in the process of setting goals and objectives. So you've got to have those to work towards first. And if you're still developing, it's a little hard to coalesce around this. And one of the most important things is you also have to trust, right? It's hard to trust somebody you didn't know. Just because, great, the voters elected you and me, that doesn't mean that I trust you. That's going to take some relationship building and time. So it's, it's, you've got to be a little bit patient. And for what I find sometimes with people who've been on council for a long time, where you came from a really high functioning team because you had all those elements of order, it can sometimes be frustrating because you feel like you're going backwards as opposed to just being a normal transition from one council to the next. In my perspective, particularly from reading your strategic goals and stuff that you guys are about to adopt, I think you guys are definitely on the right track because it seems like you have attainable goals, goals that are actually going to solve problems and that you worked together to develop. So I think you guys are on the right path forward. And hopefully some of the other stuff in here will kind of help build the rest of that. So you, this time next year, feel like you are functioning at an optimal team level. So I like to do a little exercise and ask everybody, I'm not going to type in because I'll mess up something, but we can just do it by group. So, is a symphony orchestra a group or a team?
Team.
Why?
Because they have a common goal.
A common goal? That's right. What about a box of crayons?
A group.
You ever read the book, The Day the Crayons Quit? That was a pretty team effort.
How do you know? Is that really a book?
That is the book. The Day the Crayons Quit, it is a wonderful book. They worked as a team. They boycotted the kid. He wasn't using them effectively. So it was.
No colors for you. Good to know. Okay. I might have to get rid of this example. Okay.
Yeah.
Americans on a bus tour of France.
You know, I was going to say, like, so many of these scenarios can be like different. I mean, is there somebody from France that's going to like take the Americans hostage?
And that's why I put these in here, to kind of remind people to think, mostly because of the setting, right? There's so many scenarios where you guys could choose to be a group or choose to be a team. And so it's all about how we choose our perception and what the issues are that we're facing. I agree. It's just like being on the plane. Girl Scout troops?
Oh, what are they doing? Are they selling cookies?
They're selling cookies. They're building bridges.
Well, if they're building bridges, they're a team. If they're selling cookies, I think they're a group.
You clearly have never had to sell Girl Scout cookies. That is a team.
Look at him. He ate a few of them. How did he help with the box?
Yes. You know, I mean, it's, it's the, the question is, is like, do you have a common task or a common goal that you're going to be achieving? Because all of us together, if we showed up at the Bay Area Fun Festival, we're there, you could say maybe a little bit of a team because we're trying to be good stewards of North Bend and, and network. But also maybe as an individual, individually, it's more like we're the group that's there. So I think it, I think almost every single one of these could be, it depends.
Yep. And I think that's the key. And it's not just necessarily, we're kind of touching on it, the big factor is you have a common goal. But there's other factors too, right? A common identity. Like you mentioned, the flight attendants have a way to identify themselves. That does matter, right? Because people associate that why you guys have name tags in front of you. Some councillors, I, the city councils I know actually have like city shirts or whatever. So when they're out at those types of festivals, they're clearly identified as a representative of North Bend. So you've got the common goal, the common identity, and an understanding of what your roles are. So if you take the, the festival outside, so for example, one of the cities I worked with every Saturday at the farmer's market, that they would have a subset of the council goal and they would have different, different objectives while they're at the farmer's market. Some were trying to connect with the kids who would play in the water fountain to get them interested in the whole government. Others were staffing in informational booths. Some were helping out the parks department, sell tickets. And so even though they seemed like a separate group, one of their identified goals was to try and build community morale and get to know them. And they were doing it through specific tasks that didn't seem related, but they could be. And I think you're right. All of these in some respects, some are clearly, right, like first responders to an emergency. Obviously, you want the paramedics to be working together as a team, but there's also instances where they're just hanging out as a group, right? They're not necessarily working together. But depending on the fact, the situation, they can quickly join together as a team. So just kind of think about those sometimes and what you want. The second biggest part, so you know you need to be a team, the second biggest part is rather called playing your part, but more importantly, not playing someone else's part. And the best example I can give of this, have you guys ever been to like a team ball game or Little League game with the four-year-olds? If you've never done it, it's the happiest moment of your life. It's super good for your soul. You cannot leave mad. But what happens at a team ball game? When a little batter hits the ball and it runs to first base? Everybody on the field runs to first base to try and get the ball, right? There's no concept of positions. There's no concept of who's supposed to get the ball. It's literally like a dog. There's a ball and all of the kids run in and try and get the ball. And it's super cute. But if the New York Yankees were doing that, we'd have some problems, right? There's a pitcher. There's a catcher. It's not appropriate for the third baseman to try and hit a first base if that's where the ball's hit. He's supposed to stay where he is in man station. And that works for all types of successful teams, including the city council and the city staff as a whole. You all have your roles and sometimes those roles are going to seem like they mesh, right? They're going to seem to blend at certain parts, but there actually is pretty definite and finite parameters in which you need to operate. And when I start to see councils kind of dip back into groups or not high functioning, is when we're not playing the roles that we've been assigned. And to be perfectly blunt, because I'm a lawyer, in some instances, particularly elected officials, if they go too far outside their, their lines, then we can see lawsuits and we can see payments. City-county insurance, which ensures everybody except the big four, so that includes you, will tell you one of their growing, growing, the growing areas of litigation expenses for them are elected officials trying to direct the work of staff or insinuating that staff should be doing something either directly or indirectly in the hostile work environment claims. And those are becoming much more expensive for us to pay.
Can, can you, I think this is, like, this can be really hard when we're, you know, we've got, some of us are new to really understand that, what that role is. So I want to make sure like we're, like, can you give us like specific examples? Because I think that is, it's, it's a sticky widget.
It's really hard. So what I, and so when I looked at your rules of procedure, they're, they're, they're pretty decent. I would say they could be tightened up a little bit.
And, and when you say rules and procedure, our charter.
No, I mean your actual council rules of procedure.
Okay, council rules.
Yeah. So I, I, I wouldn't, your charter's fine. I mean, if you're going to do a charter review committee in five years, there's some tweaks I would say make, but there's nothing functionally wrong with it.
Okay.
But your rules of procedure, I would say, could probably tighten up, particularly with the staff issue. So what I would say is, as you're going to, and we'll get more into this, your only authority is as a body, as a council. That's it. So you have absolutely no authority to go and tell David, you need to do X, Y, and Z. Literally nothing whatsoever. The problem, though, is it's fine for somebody like David who's a city manager and can know that you have absolutely no authority to tell me this and is seemingly in charge enough to say, no, it's not. Where you run into trouble, particularly litigation, is when it's not David. It's one of the staff, where it's a city recorder or it's a police officer. Some of it's not deliberate. Some of it is completely just trying to be helpful. And the best example I can give is, is you're out driving, say, mayor, you're out driving down the road and you see a pothole and you're like, oh, I should call the public works director. They may not know about this. And you were literally just trying to be helpful. You were trying to be a citizen of North Bend. There's a pothole in California right by the stop sign. Can you please go fix it? And what the public works official hears is. And what the public works official hears is, the mayor's just told me to go fill a pothole. Regardless of whether or not it was a priority, it should have been a priority. What they have heard is, the mayor, who has all of this power and is the head of the city, just gave me an order. And that's not what you were trying to do. And so what you'll start to see is, I've seen some city managers who have literally said, you can't talk to my staff. You have to come through me and I will disseminate it because my staff is going to take your just helpful suggestion as the directive, which is going to derail it. So in some council rules of procedure, you'll see things like they have to be directed to the city manager. In smaller cities, what we tend to see, what I tend to see is, it's okay to talk to the department head levels because they kind of understand the difference too, but you've got to see the city manager so they know. But generally speaking, what I typically see is more explicit language about how you can communicate with the city manager. And then also, what are the limits in terms of clarification? So you should be able to talk with the city manager, but you can't, I wouldn't say kind of overstep and take up the whole day. So it's one thing to say, hey, David, I don't remember. What's the deadline for when we have to have items on the agenda? That's easy. Versus, hey, David, I've got this really cool idea. I think that we could probably fund a new community center. If we did this type of bond, I think it will work. I need you to look into our ability to get the bond, what a community center would look like, and start drafting an RFP. You're out over your speed dips because that's not a quick two, three, five-minute thing. And so what you'll start to see in a lot of rules is concepts like councillors can talk with the city manager, but it's up, you know, that you can't take more than 30 minutes or 45 minutes worth of time. And it's up to this. And then the council empowers the city manager to say, this is really going to derail what the full council has directed me to do in terms of goals and objectives. So we need to, we need to put this on a future council agenda before I can move forward with it. That's probably, particularly if you've got a pretty aggressive strategic goal setting that you guys want to achieve, that's probably where you need to work on, is kind of setting some of those parameters. And you should do it in consultation with your city manager because each city manager's different. I did, I was in Central Oregon last month and I had the city of Redmond and the city of Primeville, and their city managers had very different preferences. Primeville's philosophy was, I've got a really small team. I don't, I can't be involved in every decision because I just need them to go. So my department heads, if they're smart enough, they'll tell me if council's overstepped or ask them for something they can't. Whereas Redmond, because of the figure, he was like, no, 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 no. He's like, I've got so many staff that if I'm not the conduit, I'll get lost and the council will start getting more information and will start narrating projects. So it's really kind of a conversation between you and the city manager, but there's always a baseline in your role. How much, how much should we impose individually as opposed to globally? And I'll take that a step farther. It's also becoming more and more common to see that same kind of parameters established with your city attorney. Because as we become more litigious, unfortunately, as a society, or when we become less functional as a team, people want to quite frankly use the city attorney to kind of say, haha, I got you. Or worse, they don't like what David said, so they're going to go around David and they're going to go to the city attorney and try to get the city attorney and the city manager. So I'm also starting to see a lot more rules that really severely limit who can ask the city attorney questions and what parameters in which those questions can be asked. Those are ways I would probably think about maybe tightening up some of your rules, not because you may necessarily have an issue right now, because I like to put rules in place in advance so that when you do have conflict, you're not trying to figure out a way to resolve the conflict in the moment. The rule is already there to protect everybody. Those are kind of examples that I would say. It's one thing, another example I would say, it's one thing in a city council meeting, so you've got public comment. So let's say, for example, let's say you guys have an animal ordinance on the books. Everybody has to license their dog. So we have, you know, all the dogs are just, for example. And somebody during public comment says, you know, I really don't understand why the, you know, the dog permit fees went up $25 this year. It's really upsetting to me. I can't afford it. I'm on a fixed income. And let's say not everybody on the council realized that was happening. It was just part of a larger ordinance and it didn't get discussed. And so you're sitting there. It would be appropriate for one of the councillors to say, David, I wasn't aware that we did this change. At the next meeting, can you, can you give us some history and feedback as to how this happened? That's probably not terribly big, but if it's, you know, you rezoned my property from X to Y two years ago. I've got a lawful non-conforming use and now everything's messed up. That's a lot more complicated for David to research. And that would be one of those situations where you'd say, all right, before we send him down this rabbit hole, we should probably discuss this as council and see if we can get a majority to do it. Some of it's going to be hard, right? It's going to require communication between the two of you with David saying, well, yeah, I can get that knocked out in 30 minutes to an hour versus you just asked me to do three and a half weeks' work with everybody. I can't possibly do that with the other expectations I have. Those are things I would think about immediately in terms of what you want to do. And we'll go through some of your specific roles. So the first thing with the North Bend Council, and I can't express this one enough, the hardest thing is to really remember that you do act completely as a body. And so it's really not uncommon, especially for newly-elected officials, and I have no idea if that's the case here, but for newly-elected officials to have run on a particular issue or they have something they're super passionate about, right? Like, I promised everybody who voted for me that I would make it a priority that we would, we would build an indoor water park. That was my priority. And so it's never failed. Within the first three to six months of every new election cycle, my office is flooded with calls from newly-elected officials who say, I was, I was elected to build this water park and the city council keeps telling me no. And my flippant answer always is, well, how big's your council? Well, at seven, learn to count to four. That's how you get your water park. You learn to count to four because you have absolutely no authority to build a water park. You're going to need a majority vote to get that done. And you can't usually get it just by demanding it, just by saying it was on my platform. You're going to have to figure out a way to work with one another to get it. And once your council has adopted goals, it's going to be even more difficult to get it done because that's the agreed-upon goals. So we agreed that we had X amount of dollars and we were going to spend it this way. And if you want to come in and add another $15 million project, you're going to have to convince people why your project should take precedence over all the goal-setting and objectives that have already been done. It can be super, super, super frustrating, but that's how we work because you don't have any power. So you've got to figure out a way to get other councillors involved. And in my experience, it's never successful when you are trying to belittle or badger or beat somebody into submission to get your way. You're going to have to figure out, because you're going to work with these people no matter what. There's a commissioner from Portland that I worked with for a really long time, and she always said, she's like, if I'm mean and nasty to get my vote this time, she's like, they're going to hold it against me at the next vote and I'm not going to get what I want the next time. She's like, each, she's like, I have to go into each vote realizing that what I do in this moment is probably going to affect what the other people do in the next moment. And I think that that's super important to remember. You're going to have to figure out a way to work as a body. And that's really hard, particularly when you feel like you have certain objectives. You'll also have to remember that there's a functional difference between your main job and staff's main job. So you have two main jobs. And the first is to figure out what your community is supposed to look like. You are the strategic planners and the visionaries. So you have been elected to protect and shape and grow North Bend. That is your number-one primary objective. What do we want North Bend to look like in six months? What do we want it to look like in six years? What do we want it to look like in six years? That is your number-one priority. And that's very high, right? That's very strategic and it's deliberately intentional. You're not supposed to be the people who are in the weeds and figuring out how to make the sausage. That's his job. You actually, in all honesty, to a certain extent, you have the easy job, right? You get to say, here's our plan. Peace out. That's the number-one job for councils. And it sounds like you guys have done that with your goal-setting already. What I think, that doesn't mean your work's done, you've established the goals, right? You should hopefully have some benchmarks built in. You should be touching base. I know some city councils, what they do is particularly when the budget cycle comes up each year, is they ask, how is this budget asked timed back to the strategic plan that we adopted? At the end of the year, they'll ask for an update. Where are we on this? If there's new ordinances that are going to be passed, if there's a massive spending request or a new contract, they'll specifically say, show me where in our strategic plan this is helping to fulfill one of those goals. You're constantly touching base. And even if you have like a three- or four-year strategic plan, each year you kind of start the year and say, okay, so we had a four-year strategic plan. Where'd we finish up after year one? Okay, so we're now in year two. What can we reasonably expect to see happen in year two? And are we still on target to make our four-year goal? Or has something changed? Like, who had global pandemic in their strategic plan when we walked in in 2020? My guess is not a whole lot of people. And I worked with a lot of councils who were struggling, saying, look, we can't do the same thing even in 2021 because we just lost 30% of our revenue. We're done. We've got to go back to strategic planning because we can't, we can't fund anything we had in 2021 and 2022. Maybe now with the CARES Act funding being distributed, but before that, we're like, I just have 30% of my revenue gone. That's your number-one thing, is your strategic planning. Your second thing that you do is your legislative function. You actually are supposed to be responsible for figuring out what laws the city needs and what laws you no longer need. That's your second primary purpose, is to act as the legislative branch of government. And so a lot of times I think we get, we lose sight of the fact of how powerful that is. So I will say, I'm probably like David, I'm a huge local government geek. I think lots of people think the federal government, state government have all this power over people's lives. And the reality is, you people affect daily lives way more than they ever, ever, ever can. You get to tell people how many dogs they can own. You get to tell them how tall their fence is. You get to tell them whether or not they can put a shed on their property. You get to tell them how much they have to pay to get water, something they need to actually live. You get to tell them if they open up a business, how much it's going to cost them to do that business. What's it going to look like? You get to tell them where those businesses can be located. So in terms of an everyday life impact, you have much more power than the state or federal government, which is why your legislative power, in my opinion, should be your second most important power. Because when you legislate, you really are impacting their lives. And it's not just what you're legislating for. It's, in my opinion, going back and making sure the legislation you already did still matters. It's kind of like rules of procedure. We are great at passing ordinances in local government, not so great at going back and making sure they're actually still working for us. My guess is if I went around to every single city in this country, almost every single one of them has an ordinance on their books they no longer need. Or an ordinance on those books they're no longer enforcing, or they're completely ignoring, right? Because it's just not relevant anymore. And so part of legislating isn't just what are we going to do next? It's how effective we're in and what we've already done. And if you take those two big goals, the strategic planning and your legislative goal, that's a full-time job for people who don't get paid and probably have real full-time jobs elsewhere. Which is why all of the other, okay, put the strategic plan into action, enforce the ordinance that we have, you delegate specifically to staff. Make sense? Those are your two big roles. You've got some little, small ones in there. Occasionally, you're going to act as quasi-judicial body, so you're going to hear appeals or land use decisions. That's not very, it's not, it's not, it's not abnormal, but it's not your daily function, right? It's not the primary thing that you're going to want to do. But always remember that when you do do it, that's equally important. In some respect, it's harder because you get so used to being able to do things in your strategic and your legislative capacity, and then you have your lawyer come in and saying, you can't behave that way this time. Like, no, you can't have those sidebar conversations. No, you can't be impacted in the same way. You're going to have to act differently. But those are really it. Those are your roles. And if they don't fall into one of those roles, then I would say it's probably not a role for you guys to have.
So as we continue this conversation on roles, and forgive me if we get into this in another slide, what are some suggestions and are there things that we should look out for of like, changing our role of like citizen of North Bend and citizen of my neighborhood to now a councillor? And how, you know, are there times that we should recuse ourselves from things? Like, what, what should we look out for there in that role?
So I'm going to say something that no, no elected official ever likes to hear. You're never going to be seen as being in your private capacity ever again, even when you think that you are. The reality is taking off your councillor hat, taking off your mayor hat, while you can do it and you should be allowed to do it, the vast majority of the public will never believe that you're doing it. You can go to your local school board meeting because your kids go to school there and they could be designing a whole new curriculum that as a mom you think is atrocious. And you can get up to that microphone and you can say 20 times, I am not speaking in my capacity as the mayor of North Bend. I am not here as the mayor of North Bend. I am not representing North Bend. I'm here as a parent of a student in this school. And 80% of the people in the audience will see you as the mayor of North Bend speaking out against a proposal proposed by the school board. That's just the reality of the situation. And I think, in my experience, whether it's fair or it's unfair, it's the reality and you should be mindful of that situation. So when you do need to speak in your private capacity, so it is the school board setting, you have to make it abundantly clear as many times as you can. You're not speaking as the mayor. And I say you have to think about little things even. So if, for example, like the city, like these nice little mugs, right? If I were you, I would not bring anything in like this with me. Even if this is your primary water bottle now because you just love it so much, this is not what you bring into a meeting when you're speaking on your personal capacity. You don't wear anything at all that says North Bend. You don't have anything at all that could be associated with you. You don't sit together. So if you two are best friends, you don't sit together at the school board meeting because then it looks like you're consolidating power per se. But you have to know that people are going to assume you're still speaking on behalf of that. Where I think it gets even more difficult, and I was dealing with the city with this probably about a couple of months ago. So it's becoming more and more common for a lot of council rules to specifically prohibit councillors from lobbying or trying to influence city-established committees and commissions. And they'll actually put it in their rules of procedure. And that's true whether it's a big city like Portland or a very small city that only has a couple thousand people. And the reason behind that is, and I will say personally, I think that that makes sense if the committees are supposed to be advisory in nature. So if you have created a committee to advise the council on something, then they should be free to come up whatever opinion they want. And it's kind of the same thing. It's just like the possible situation with the public works director. So if you go to the planning commission meeting and you say, I'm not here as a councillor for the city of North Bend. I'm just here to listen. I'm a private citizen. This is what I care about. Your planning commission members know that you're on the city council. They also know that the council gets to appoint them and remove them. And if they don't do what the council wants, they could run the risk of losing their seat. Or the council could completely ignore their recommendations if they make too many mayor, too many of the members mad. So what I'm starting to see in the last five years is city councils taking a concerted effort to say, we created the committees to be advisory in nature. We want them to not, you know, be influenced by council members. Counselors cannot participate in the process. That's been tricky when you have a private issue, right? Because the reality is, is if it's my neighbor's house and they're asking for, you know, a waiver to build a three-story structure and it's a single-family home, I have an opinion, right? I have a pretty big opinion. What I have seen councils do in that instance with some of their rules is what they've essentially asked that those councillors, I've seen some councils take it away where, does it have to be you who speaks against it? Or is like, do you have a spouse? Is there another homeowner or property owner who can quote-unquote, "carry the water" for you? Is that possible? If it's not possible, because not everybody is married, right? Some people stayed single. Smart people stayed single. And, my husband's not here. I get picked on. We've all been quarantined together for 15 months. He's probably glad I'm gone. Is, is having those frank conversations and being more, even more articulate than at the school board, right? So it's not just saying, I'm Patty Moby Hill, a councillor, and I'm speaking in my private capacity. It's acknowledging to the planning commission, look, I know that you're ultimately making a recommendation that could be appealed to the city council. And I know that it could seem really influential that I'm a councillor and I'm coming here to object to or support this proposal, but I need you to really try to realize, this is my personal capacity. I don't want to talk about what comes next. I'm limiting my comments solely to the issue impacting my property and how it works. It's hard. It's, it requires, it requires a lot of objectivity that I don't even know that I have all the time because when you're talking about your own property or something that impacting your kids, we're going to have a personal step in it. I used to work with, I had a councillor who unfortunately owned a lot of property in our town. And so family had been longstanding residents and so they owned a lot of property. That was right for redevelopment. And what he actually requested, anytime there was going to be an issue for the planning commission, is he would actually use us to help kind of write out and helped him draft his statements because he was particularly concerned about not influencing the planning commission. And so he would just, he wasn't asking us to write it, but he would say, I'm writing you. Can you be my second set of eyes and see like, am I doing enough to make it clear that this is my private capacity versus in my public persona? That's what works for us. Don't know if it would work for you. That's when it's going to be super hard for you, is when it's something that impacts you personally and you want to speak out on it, rightfully so. But I have seen a lot more councils move towards significantly admitting committee, or councils who put top of dates and commissions.
Yeah, I was going to ask, can, like, this is a hot topic right now for us because we have some really big things that all of us are passionate about. So like, can we dig into this or is this not an appropriate time?
Sure, absolutely. No, absolutely. This is your train. You can go as far as you want.
And please, I don't want to speak for you, you know, like, you guys dig in too, but what I was going to ask Bill was, the, like, so, so we have, so we have councillors appointed to committees. And you were, I wrote down, you said, we have to be careful that that role is not to influence others on committees, but we want the councillors to have a voice. And they, so, is that, it's like, ah, the lines are so, like, is then the, is the councillor's job to really like, listen and facilitate?
It depends on what you guys want. So here's, so there's a couple cities who have established it as... So here's, so there's a couple cities who have established it as, they're just supposed to be almost the connection back to the council itself. So you're carrying the council's water to the committee. Hey, I wanna let you know that you guys are talking, let's say, let's say for example, it was a redevelopment commission, right? And so, they're talking about doing some, you know, some abatements or something that are gonna be helpful. And you could say, look, I, I know that this is what you're thinking about, but, but you should know in the council's strategic plan, we specifically talked about whether or not we would wanna do abatements in this area, and it was a hard no. So just take that as you will and make your recommendation, but I'm literally carrying information from the council back to you. And then they take what the committee says and they almost report back to the council in the same way. So they're essentially the conduit and the telephone line. That's the way some cities have chosen to do it. Others have, have chosen to say, I can think of one where it's pretty extreme, where council liaisons go, but they are not allowed to participate in the discussion. It's literally in their rules where they can give a five-minute report to the committee at the beginning. These are some things that you need to know about from the council. And they're not even allowed to sit at the table. It literally says in their rules of procedure, they have to sit separately away, so as not to influence. And then they are to report back at the next council meeting what the committee did. Then there's, I've seen some where they want people to be active members of the committee, but there's rules that require them to always speak last. So they can't be the starter of the conversation and they can't be the first. Like, everybody else in the committee has to go so that, so that they're not influencing other people's opinions before they're given. I've seen some people take that route. It just depends on what you guys need. And then there's also an importance to know, what do you want from the committee? I'm not a huge fan of counselors talking at Planning Commission meetings when those decisions can be appealed to the council itself, if that's an answer, because you've just created this huge ex parte issue and it just, it, I don't like it, it's messy. And if you ask me, I would say, please don't do it. Unless it's literally impacting your personal property, it's just messy, it's just not great. Other committees, it may matter, right? So let's say you decided you've got an issue with unhoused people in North Bend, and so you wanna create a task force to study it. That's a situation where if you appoint a council member to it, maybe you want them to be an active participant on that committee. Not that you want them to skew the committee's results, but you want them to be actively engaged in discussing and working through a problem, which may be something different than you want them on your redevelopment committee. Each, each committee can be a little different, so it's okay to have different rules and concepts for different committees depending on what you need. Does that help?
Bill, go ahead, because I jumped, I jumped on.
So my, my question is, you know, I've been on council a long time and it was always my understanding, which may be clear off base, that, that we're not invited to the Planning Commission meetings.
It, it, it really, so I know people hate this, but each city is unique. I don't know of a single lawyer who wants their council to go to a commission meeting.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. And I don't know if it's like, I don't know if that's gospel or not, but I know that in the past, every, every city administrator, city manager, you know, prior to David, has highly recommended, if not told us straight up, we don't want you at the Planning Commission meetings.
Bill, you're right, yeah.
And I, I would say, that's what I would say. I don't know what your city attorneys would say, but the attorneys that I work with.
Your city attorney would say that.
Yes. And the reason is, it's not so much, it's a different issue. It's not so much unduly influencing. It's the reality that that decision could come back to the council. And you have created a whole host of legal issues the entire council now has to deal with by the simple fact that you already got information at the Planning Commission meeting or you provided testimony as well. And a lot of people will just say, well, I'll just recuse myself and step out. And that, that is a possibility. But then you also have to remember, then the full council is not making the decision together. And when you're talking about really big developments or subdivisions, that could matter. So if you remember, if you're supposed to all operate together as a team and hopefully find consensus, when one teammate is gone, that can impact the whole team because you all have valuable information to contribute. So I always looked at it when I worked with my councils as, if you feel like you have to do it because it's literally impacting your property, let's figure out a way to do it. But I was never supportive of them saying, I'm just passionate about this particular issue and I wanna say something about it.
Or any issue, just to go to, you know, another meeting. I mean, most people don't like to go to other meetings for any reason whatsoever, but.
Is it, does it become then a legal thing where you would, like, I'm thinking of like a scenario where, maybe, I, I teach at the college, that's my full-time job. And maybe there's some sort of planning thing where they wanna open up a business center in North Bend and I'm either for it or against it. Because I know, like, but if I advocate for it and I go to the Planning Commission, I'm saying, why they need this in the committee? Because I would guarantee more employment for myself, right?
Yeah, so you would have a whole host of issues in that situation.
Well, I was like, because, yeah.
Yeah, but there, so the, the issue really then is you make it, you, you put, you put the council in a position, even if it never gets appealed to the city council. And that's what I would hear a lot of times, is well, there's no guarantee it's gonna go to the council. But there's a risk that it's gonna go to the council. If the option is that this could somehow end up in front of the council, what you've done is ensure that you've muddied the council's process itself. Because I know at a minimum, I've gotta deal with ex parte conversations. I'm also now gonna have to deal with a potential bias. Maybe not a conflict of interest, because maybe you're not gonna be personally financially benefited, but we're gonna have to walk through bias, which is a real thing. And if we get it wrong, or even if we get it right, with, so the, okay. I don't know how everybody feels about Oregon's land use system. In my opinion, the crummy thing about it is the amount of appeals that have to go to the land use board of appeals. And you can go for anything. And so, when I try to plan a case, it's not just a matter of, am I gonna get sued or not get sued and lose? It's, can I avoid giving them things to sue me on, right? So that's part of it, right? So it's not just am I gonna get sued, it's can I avoid?
Yes. Can I throw something in here that I think is, is gonna at least sum up where we are coming from a lot of the time? It's this, if you create issues that another lawyer can pull out and go, hey, we could sue him on this, that will cost us money. Even if they sue the city on this and they lose, we have spent tens of thousands of dollars just working our way through from, you know, the city council appeal that was an appeal of the land use hearing to, what, circuit court, court of appeals, supreme, I mean, so much money. Even if we win, it, it's just, it's so expensive.
And the reality is, is if you look at Luba decisions, nine times out of ten, they're not overturning the city's decision. They're just saying your process was flawed. So it's super, now, I, we actually had a, we had a CLE, continuing at a couple of years ago, where we had a Luba judge come. And she said, I know that it's frustrating you. Literally nine times out of ten, they are not telling you your decision is wrong. They're telling you your process was flawed. So to your point, you were spending twenty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to be right, but told to do it again because you messed up the process. And so, when you go to a Planning Commission before it gets to the council, you are literally doing exactly what she said. You are giving the other side a process complaint to argue. It can be biased, it can be ex parte. And even though it may not have any actual impact on the decision that's eventually upheld, it slows down the project anywhere from six to eighteen months if you're lucky. And you're literally gonna spend anywhere between fifteen to maybe a hundred thousand dollars. So take, for example, the city of Eugene. It is not uncommon for the city of Eugene to have one development case go to Luba three to four times. And at no point is their decision ever overtold, overturned. Ultimately, the development gets to go through, but it's three or four different process issues that are going to Luba. And if they did not have in-house counsel, they would be looking at a quarter of a million dollars just on one case easily, at least. And so, from my perspective, no, don't ever go to a Planning Commission meeting. I, I mean, I'm honest enough to accept that, like, if you're literally, if it's your adjacent neighbor, I get it. But that's when you should be working closely with senior staff and the city attorney and saying, I know this is gonna create problems, I know this is gonna cause problems. This is literally gonna negatively impact me personally, like, it's gonna hit my pocketbook if this happens, I have to talk about it. That's different.
Yeah, to, to Bill's point where you start about not going to planning or being advised that way, I think that's the one unique committee that we have, which has the land use planning process, has a very detailed appeals process, citizen involvement, a whole variety of other things that way. Such that, as, as you mentioned, you could win, but still lose because of the monies that you have involved. So that particular way and anything potentially could come to us. And when it does, we have a full report on it as to what went on. So it would seem the very simplest way to protect not only the work of our Planning Commission, but the city itself would be right, not to go to a Planning Commission. Because I've had some of those where, you know, I've sat in on Planning Commission meetings and so I thought, well, what about, and I know I asked the administrator, no, you don't wanna do that. Well, why? And so we went through that process again. So it's probably in that one that we have this detailed process. We shouldn't, you know, go in, in that particular way.
I, I mean, in my council that I work for, we actually prohibit our counselors from even attending meetings.
Well, that's, that's kinda where, that, that was my understanding to begin with.
Like, I don't even want them in the room. Because if you're in the room, it's a potential argument, right? It was literally that simple. It is literally a potential argument just by you being in the room. You cannot be in the room.
There isn't anything in our ordinance or our charter that says you can't. But anybody over there that you ask will say, please don't.
Right. And so, if you're talking about kind of how to tighten things up, that would be, that would be one thing to think about. Thinking, I would encourage you for all of your committees, but I would encourage you to think specifically about the Planning Commission or any other quasi judicial capacity you have. There are some cities who have, I don't know if your city does. If you issue business licenses and he denies it, and those can be appealed to the city council. But like, if there's some type of committee or commission that can, that can be appealed to you in addition to the Planning Commission, think about whether or not that matters. Because you don't have to deal with Luba, but it's still the same process confronts you're gonna have to deal with. So if you can be the appellate body for a decision the committee makes, I would think about how you wanna limit it. And I, I know a lot of times people will say, well, we don't have a problem now, so why are we creating a rule? Why would we spend time drafting a rule when we don't have a problem? Because it's easier to crack, because one, it prevents you from having a problem. And the last thing you wanna do is when you have a disconnect. So if you want to be able to go to this committee and the rest of your council doesn't, and we don't have a rule on it, trying to write that rule while you're annoyed as heck and at odds, is gonna be way more difficult than when everybody's like, let's, let's be, let's, let's prevent going off a cliff before it happens and everybody's committed to doing it.
Eric, go.
I like her.
Oh, you like her? Well, so, hey, we have her until nine, so this is our time. And I know, like, you know, Eric's new on council, Susanna's new, Pat's been around before. But like, I just, I wanna make sure that we're really clear about like what our rules are. Because every single person who's here is passionate about our community and we want to do the right thing.
Yes.
And, but it's, some of it is just, you know, for me even as, as a new mayor, I'm like, okay, so, you know, yeah, do I go to the school board meetings? Like, where does that line go? So I wanna give, I wanna make sure that they have time to ask these questions, so we have you. So Eric, Susanna, Pat, what else do we wanna ask for?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm gonna go right back with Bill's statement. It was always insinuated to me, and I'm not all that much of a rules guy, but it was always insinuated to me, it's, you can't go to a Planning Commission meeting. So I never did. But, you know, on anything really important, you're gonna see anyway, you know, as a council, more and more than likely.
Yeah.
Well, Ben. I, I like the point that she made about limiting our contact with the committees in general, right? The fact that we, I know that Susanna and I being in the Parks Board, right? We all are back and forth talking with it. So we, we actually probably interject a lot of our own thoughts into that process when, based on your explanation, like, I think yours makes more sense than what we've been doing because we are on this side of the House, right? When it comes to us, we're gonna make those, we can make those same arguments during a report or a decision that needs to be made. But we do kind of, and I don't think, we don't do it intentionally. We are trying to do our best for what we think is right in the Parks Committee aspect of it, but we're kind of imposing our will on that committee in general. And I don't know what happens in the other committees. But it, as I sat here listening to you talk about it, I was kinda like, that does really kind of feel like it's unfair to the community that should be making more of the decisions on that committee, that advisory committee to us, than us actually having more to say in it. And I hadn't really thought about it until.
It's, and I will say, it, I don't know, I, I think we're going that way. I think you're starting to leave. Let me preface, each city's gotta figure out what works best for you. I'm a firm believer that what works in North Bend may not even work in Kuspe. It may not work in Portland, I firmly believe that. But I think that we can get good ideas from others. And what I'm starting to see is more and more cities go to kind of distancing their council members from the committees for that reason. I can't tell you where the trend started, but I can tell you that I, I see it now in cities with populations of only three thousand and cities like Portland, which has, you know, hundreds of thousands of people. And it's that universal, right? And it's not deliberate, you're not trying to impose a rule, right? But it's the same concept. Whether or not, like, as I said, your power is as a group. But you're not gonna be seen that way when you're sitting at a table, right? I mean, because it's kind of like, well, why am I gonna suggest it if two of the council members are already telling you they don't like it?
Right.
Yes.
May I speak to the elephant in the room? The elephant in the room is that I spoke at the Planning Commission about a week ago concerning the transportation plan that now is on our agenda for tomorrow, to review it, have a public hearing on it, and then vote on the ordinance to, to pass it. I guess that's my understanding. And so I went at the Planning Commission and I, it was, I didn't do it properly at all. I was, I was focused on something else with the Parks Committee. So it was, it was not well planned. I didn't do what I should've done, which was to get myself on, you know, set up through the official channels. And I, I owe Chelsea an apology for that. For some reason, I didn't even think about it, and I've made public comments many times in the past. I blew it this time and I just walked in and, and we had all met several hours earlier for a joint Planning Commission, City Council meeting. So I'm like, well, I'm just going back. And I walked in and Chelsea's got her jaw a little bit dropped. But I did speak, I didn't watch the clock, I, I was quiet as soon as she kinda marked time, but I went on for about six minutes. And the background was that I had gone several years ago. I had gone in and submitted a citizen's concern asking for a stop sign. The traffic committee, which does not have any citizen input on it at all, it's all three city staff, they took my request and they changed a couple other stop signs, which kind of set up a detour around taking traffic off a state highway with a detour through city streets back onto a state highway. And the recent traffic counts show twenty-five-hundred cars a day using that route and roughly two-hundred-and-fifty at peak hour, which is between five and six o'clock. That's when the peak hour was. And heading north on Highway one oh one. That is traffic that crosses the bridge and goes into the county. So that is not local traffic. So my complaint was, why are we doing this? It's beating up the city streets. I took photos yesterday, it's beating up the city streets. But I wanted the Planning Commission to think about this. And that was my reason for speaking to them. And I can see that it was the bad, it was a bad move because I could've easily just said it at the council meeting, which I will, I will get that in the record. So I apologized to everybody for doing it improperly and probably really muddying up the works. I will not do that again. I, I feel bad about it. But at the same time, I think that whole issue needed a closer look. And I do have a problem with the Transportation Committee being able to make that big of a change. And based on my little request for a stop sign, I had no idea that this was gonna become, this big bypass was gonna happen. And that something's wrong when three staff can make that big of a decision without any public notice and any public input. Something is wrong there. The city planner's not even on it and it, you know, this, this big detour is going right alongside residential areas, right in front of residential areas. So.
So I guess the question is.
It's a hot button with me because I made the original request for the stupid stop sign. And the staff told me that got another person on the traffic committee to go along with the idea, who was in opposition until I took in my stupid stop sign request. So it mattered to me. And, and my frustration is, as, as a very new counselor, is how do you, I, I, this is just buzzwords. Effect change, how do you, how do you get things done? What is the process? You know, and I, I blew it, I didn't do it right. But in any event, that's, that's the elephant in the room.
Let me throw one other thing out there too.
Okay.
We have historically had the, historically, people have been big fans of giving council as much discretion as possible in terms of the people who wrote the code, a lot of the attorneys that we've had up to this point and, and the counselors that we've had, you know, everybody's been pretty happy with that, which is great. But then if you're looking for the answer to a picky process question, it's not there because they were sort of, there's just places in the code where it's, it's very gray. But at the same time, we know, like, this, for example, would be one that, you know, it doesn't say it anywhere. But at the same time, we know, like, this, for example, would be one that, you know, it doesn't say it anywhere, but uh, it's gonna cause us a big problem. So, you know, part of it's just learning where things are.
So here's, here's what I would say. One, um, I don't know what everybody else feels, but I appreciate anybody who says, I didn't do it right, and I'm sorry. That is personally a big thing for me, because I don't think half the people in this country are able to do that successfully. And I'm not trying to be like, literally, I.
Everybody hates me.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. Two, in terms of, I I'm gonna say that, give yourself a break. If you're a new councillor, you've gotta learn the process, and you're not gonna learn it the day one. When you're trying to effect change, this is, your struggle is not, is not unusual. I think it's a little bit of what you said. So if you have a code issue, and that's what it sounds like it's right, because these three people are changing it, so you have a code issue that you disagree with. That's actually a legislative issue. That's, so that what the solution is, is whatever the process is that that you guys have as a council, to bring forward new legislation, or to have a work-study session on what does it look like for that. I would suggest, and please don't kill me, um, is that, and my council hated this, is that every ordinance or statute that we have, we should have on some type of rotational checklist. So whether it's every three years, every four years, every five, now that can be frustrating when you find the issue now and somebody's saying, look, we're not slated to really do a comprehensive review of this for another eighteen months. And while this is an issue, I don't know that it should really jump over everything else we're working on. That, to me, is the solution to the process, right? Because that's squarely within your legislative role to bring to the council and say, I think this is an issue. Can we talk about it? Can we put it on a work session? Can we put it on agenda? Now, if you don't have a majority of them, then you gotta go back and figure out a different way to convince them. But that's the way to do it. If if it's with the specific development code, which are always super exciting to amend, um, I would always say that if it's a quick fix and it's not gonna impact a lot of things and staff has the bandwidth to do it, and it works for the whole council, put it on the agenda. If, however, you're close to being at a point where you're closer to doing a more comprehensive review or update of the development code, I'm always a big fan of doing it once instead of doing it twice, because when you start tweaking particularly with your development code, it's a lot more complicated than it is just, let's tweak with our parking ordinance. And that's just the reality of Oregon's land use system. So if if I knew, like, for example, if you told me that, you know, the plan was to put together a committee and do a comprehensive analysis of your development code in January of twenty twenty-two, I would say, couldn't wait, because you're gonna be there anyway. Uh, but that, to me, is your process, right? Is, and it's, then it's, okay, so talk with your city manager, because they're your first resource, and say, look, I've got a problem with the legislative code. What's the process for me getting this issue in front of the council to discuss if they agree with me, and then walk through it that way.
I know it's dovetailing into what you've got going, but even there, a couple weeks ago, I made the comment in the, in a, in a council meeting that, you know, there's been some things going on with with the Parks Advisory Committee, you know, and I, and and we want to hear all that. But the final rule comes, we're the elected official, and so that comes before us.
Right.
You know, just like Susanna said, that traffic deal is gonna come before us tomorrow night. So it is done the right way, you know, and do we want input? Yeah, but the final rule comes right here.
You are allowed to make the hard decisions.
Yeah.
Most people are never grateful for you. Did I see your hand up?
Well, I was just gonna go back to what we were talking about, uh, you know? If it directly impacts you personally, whether your, whether it's your property or something like that, that's one thing. But if you just don't like something, you don't, that's not the right way to go about it, Susanna. You see what I'm saying? If it was, if they were driving by your house and tearing up your driveway.
May may I answer that?
But but you see what I'm saying? Because it's not going right by your house. Your house is four blocks down the street from where the everything is.
However, 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 when I go north, got the place in Gardner, when I head north on one oh one, I take Florida, and I have to go around Lincoln Square. And there are three or four trucks parked there, and I have almost been hit about three times.
I understand that, but it's.
Because there's no, that they're, they're not doing twenty coming down.
I I understand where the truck route is. I've looked there my entire life. The former truck route that actually, I noticed the other day that there's a sign right on Virginia that says, no truck.
So so let me ask you this. So this is, so so what you're saying, though, is that, so 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 like, whether it be in, you know, councillor Noroff's c- concerned about this, or Eric decides he suddenly does not or does like disc golf, is to let it go through the process? And then then, because I want Susanna to be able to have her voice, but then her time is to say it during that, you know, if she has some specific issues, I think you just said you you took pictures or something the other day. Is that, like, is she able to, like, show those pictures? Or how how does she still, as a councillor, say, hey, I have some concerns, like, what are the, what are the parameters around that?
So I'm gonna go back a little bit first. So the the first thing I would recommend is, I would look at your current process. I don't know what all of your current process is, but I would look at the current process and see if it's meeting the needs of this council. Okay, whether that has to do with reporting to the plan commission, in general, planning commission, sorry, or all committees. You said, like, you might be rethinking your involvement with the Parks Committee. So the first thing I would do is I would analyze, analyze, what's our current process? And then identify, is it still working for us today? That's the first step, because I think what I'm hearing some of it is, is you don't, you didn't even necessarily know what the process was. And I'm hearing from you saying, thought I knew what the process was, and now I'm wondering if the process still makes sense. So for me, the first step really is, what's the current process, so we know how to operate going forward? And then what do you want it to look like in the future? That's where I would start. Generally speaking, when it comes to speaking, you know, whether, how you participate at the council and what that looks like from a land use hearing, I'm not gonna give you specific legal advice, and then I'm gonna let her do that, because I don't, I've not read your rules on that, and I'm not gonna get involved in it and screw up her case later. Like, I'm just not gonna do that to a colleague. But I think that's your first step, is identifying what the process is and then seeing where you are. Because my guess is, when I, and I looked at your, I had your council rules of procedure, and it doesn't look like, it looks like they were last updated in twenty sixteen, which has been about five years, um, which is not abnormal in in five years for you guys to maybe want some tweaks or to seek some other things. So if I was making a to-do list myself this this tonight, what I would say is maybe on some future council agenda, maybe we need to talk about, do we need to create a subcommittee to work on reviewing our rules of procedure and see what works and what doesn't work? What does that subcommittee look like?
I could have possibly attended the workshops. Would that have been appropriate? And I know that there were two before, during this transportation plan development. And I I I didn't catch them. I I wasn't paying attention. I'm not sure when they were exactly. Um, I might have asked questions if I had gone to one of those, or would that still not be appropriate as a councillor?
Were they, I don't know where they joined.
I I think that's the time, that's the process for this development of refinement of the SDP plan. And those were all citizens come in, here's what we're looking at, and what are your inputs? So I I guess from my non-legal view, that was an appropriate time to participate as a citizen.
I wasn't even aware of that.
I just didn't catch it.
Who who put some on?
So so the process of your step is about a five-year process.
Right.
And so if it goes through, you know, you do your charrette, you do your public um, input, things like that. Um, e- every local government goes through, Kusby um, has finished up with theirs, we're we're sort of next in line. Um, the county goes through their process. And so um, during that community listening session, um, they are taking in all of that data. Um, what happens, though, is as that transitions to the public hearing portions. And so, for instance, last week, what we had was a public hearing, and so so that's what the councillor's referring to. And so that's why the staff's jaw dropped, it's like, okay, I I wanted, they were surprised, because everything is, be assigned up in in Zoom, in COVID. So she shows up and they're like, okay, that's an elected official. So they they admit, they felt intimidated. What do we do? Their words, not mine. And so um, uh, you see the dynamics where uh, the the chairman says, hey, uh, Chelsea, the seat player, do we have anyone signed up? Nope, no one signed up. The councillor's like, oh, but I'm here.
Yeah, it was pretty much like that.
And so she goes to the front and 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 for six minutes.
I was quite distracted.
When when the policy is three minutes. So um, I wasn't aware of any of this. It 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 wasn't even on my radar. I actually got a call from from Susanna, who said, I've been misquoted. I'm like, what are you misquoted? I I don't know what you're talking about. So staff, David here, spent three and a half hours on Friday researching this, listening to the audio, going to staff, transcribing, calling the city attorney, you know, meeting with Susanna. And so it 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 just raveled up into what it didn't have to when it would have been appropriate to wait till the hearing got to our process, which which is the council meeting, at which we had the public comment, and then as part of the process, the mayor says, all right, we we're closing the public hearing. Now, this is the opportunity for the council to speak. And that's the appropriate time, because it's now influenced the situation. The staff has felt intimidated. Uh, I screwed up. I I I I literally was fielding questions from from Susanna, sending Susanna feedback I'm getting. And 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 there was one comment in there where the staff was frustrated. They put in something which which was along the lines of, does Susanna really care about public safety? And the reality is, I went to the staff member and said, I need to apologize. I should have ended that out. I just glossed right over it. And um, and so it caused a little friction for someone that the elected official shouldn't be interacting with anyway, um, because she's there running her meetings. It's why I actually watch them on Zoom. I've only been at one meeting to meet them and say hi, but I'm in my office watching their meetings over, which you all can do too.
Right.
Um, so that, you know, because too often, they're like, well, what is the city administrator thing? Eh, why? Because I'm a member of the traffic committee.
Right.
Don't know why. It's what the code says.
Because you got, when you quit the job, you got it.
Because that's what the code says.
No, no.
And so it's the police chief, it's me and the, it's the city engineer. And so when all this came out, I'm like, who who minded a sign where a stop sign goes or not? I looked at the code, it's like, well, that's because I'm on the committee. So I asked professional staff, you tell me what your professional recommendation is, because I'm a city administrator, okay? I'm not a planner, I'm not an engineer, you know, I hear complaints. And then same thing flipped back. You may recall in October, this this is fascinating about the committee dynamics. We were at a Parks meeting. The mayor goes to vote, and I raised my hand, it's like, hey, I'm I'm just curious. So the mayor and your setup votes, okay? The reason I was asking that is exactly what Patty's bringing out, because it's the undue influence when you're the ultimate decision. And so the mayor knows that surely after becoming mayor, and and we have unequivocal trust, we sit down, we 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 throw spaghetti on the wall all day long. But I said to her, now that you're mayor, people are gonna come out of the woodwork, and they're going to call you, they're gonna email you, because you are the mayor, even though you're an equal member of the council. They see you as the mayor with the big hat, okay? And so I often say, sit on your hands and refer it to the city administrator, and don't commit your vote. And so she hears that a lot, and so she'll call and say, okay, I got this one. And and so I'll give her the background, and I'll say, okay, this is how I suggest you sort of refer them back to the city administrator, because it gets her out, because they are looking for you to commit your vote, or they're trying to find a a crack in the dam.
Right.
And and a lot of this, um, a- as I said, one of the first things I had conversation with the mayor is, the most litigious area of your job has to do with everything from planning is on it. And it's where you're, I said, second only to HR, it's where you're going to spend most of your dollars um, on cortex. And so that was the advice that I was given. So fast forward on yours, God bless you, I bless it, I was like, and and so when she came in, I I said, just an ass, she's standing in my doorway, and I'm like, these are the three questions I have, and it has nothing to do with your traffic count. It has to do with, how did you end up in, how was a councillor in, first of all?
Yeah.
Two, how was a councillor not registered, even given public comment? And how is it that an elected official who wasn't registered, who should have had a real win, six wins at three?
I forgot.
Those were all process.
Right.
And she understood my questions.
Yeah.
But it was more important, love, you didn't afford that to everybody else that was open for public comment. So you just tilted everything.
I I was even looking, well, where's the paper that you sign up and and, you know, sign, and then you have to, you know, before all the, we had to do it remotely. I was, I was, I was, I don't know, I was in the zone. I don't know where it was.
So that's how it went south. That's what my questions were, because I'm having to think down the road that we have now treated elected official differently than everybody else in the public. And so that's what my thought was when you called me.
The minutes had me that my my stop sign request was denied, which is not true. And it didn't have the other five minutes of things that I said. And so I just kind of typed something outside it and brought it in, anyway.
So I think the other thing to remember is, being a councillor, a long-term councillor, is, and it goes back to the team, the media is probably the biggest thing.
Wrong, yeah.
So the the media's job is to divide and conquer, okay? If they find somebody that they can get to talk about something, that is not, that is not our job to talk as individuals. We talk as a, as a, as a, as a body. And we have certain representatives that are to to do that. The mayor, the city administrator, you know, and and, you know, even being council president, I I won't talk, because because it becomes my opinion immediately, and 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 they take it as a whole.
And I would say, that goes also to, again, I'm gonna encourage you to take a look at your rules. And one of the things I would say is, I don't know if that's an issue yet or not, but what I'm starting to see is a lot of rules is, specific explanation of when you can speak on behalf of the city council. And a lot of cities are saying, the mayor can speak, but they can only speak about what the, what the council has decided as a body. So, for example, if they pass an ordinance that you voted against, when you're asked by the press, it's a council-supported ordinance. And that that's one of the hardest things to do, is, you know, you get a four-three split, and you're on the losing end of it, mayor, but you have to get out there, and you are now championing what your team did.
None of this one, like, well, I didn't vote.
That's exactly right. You have support, it's down to whether you voted for it or not.
I think you mentioned a quarterback before. I'm sure, so I'm I'm from Indianapolis originally, so Peyton Manning was with the Colts first before him to Denver. So anyway, you know, I'm sure there were many times in his career where Peyton Manning had to make a play he didn't agree with. And when that play didn't work out, I'm sure he wanted to say, I've just done what I said, it was a problem. But whenever he was interviewed, he succeeded as a team, he failed as a team. It was never anybody's fault. It was always what the team did or whatever. And that's the hardest part, particularly because it's due to the mayor, who has to be the person who answers it. But I've seen a lot of councils also say, look, we don't speak individually to the press. Or or I've seen some say, you can speak to the press, but it has to be pre-approved through the council. So I've been approached to speak, you know, I sit on the Parks Committee, right? And so I know more about it than the mayor does, and they want to do a sit-down interview about this new Parks facility that we're building. The council can say, all right, it would make sense for councillor Gleason to be the speaker, but this is kind of the parameters in which we're doing. I think those are also good things to think about. Um, to your point about the media, I think it's much more aggressive, air, in your face than it was even five or ten years ago. I mean, social media has done really good things. It's also done really bad things, and it's also made things more instantaneous. So kind of having those those parameters. It's also really common to to limit, what I've seen a lot of them in is, is council rules will really limit the mayor to only speaking about what the council did and leaving the details back to city staff. Like, I'm gonna tell you that we adopted a new traffic study, or we did, we did a new traffic calming ordinance, right? We did install, we commanded tracker calming to be installed on Third Street and Second Street. That is what the council did. Okay, can you please tell me about the design? No, you're gonna have to speak with the city manager about it. Can you tell me how much it costs? You need to speak with the city manager about it. I'm here to tell you what the council did, and the council determined that traffic calming was necessary because of these statistics, and we ordered them to install traffic calming. Done. That's what the council did.
Right.
Details, I'll tell you what I have.
I, just to dovetail into some of your earlier topics there, the hardest thing for me, and because I'm, I don't take a lot of stuff from a lot of people, uh, was to sit here six years ago and listen to people, you know, calling you a thief and calling you a liar. I can't either go over there and just post hole them or tell them what they think.
He's colorful.
It it, that was the hardest thing, and it's still hard.
It really is hard.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you, you guys remember, we were in the middle of that marijuana deal, and they were accusing us to go into the league of Oregon cities, and all of us having four grand to spend, and you remember all that? having four grand to spend and you remember all that? No, just nothing but garbage and we had to sit there and take it.
That is what prompted the three-minute rule.
That's why three-minute rule.
It is hard, you've all been there.
So we're, shall we make sure I answer Susan Noroff's question here? She had asked, she's like, so is it, is it the workshops that you go to or, because what I'm hearing is, no, we, you bring it to the council and that's when our input is.
Yeah, I wouldn't have gone to the workshops, I would have just done it when your role came up because you had a specific role to play. So if you looked at it in terms of, there was a process and within that process, different people had roles. So the workshops, my understanding is they're designed for citizen input. And you're not wearing the citizen hat in this particular play, you're wearing the council hat in the play just towards the end. So there was, you know, there was three acts, there was the workshop act and then there was the planning commission act and then there's the councils act. And your role doesn't really come into fruition until the final act. That would be my advice, is that's where it should come in. It may probably seem like it's.
That's so late in the process to influence anything.
But that's kind of what you signed up for as an elected official.
But it's still, they still make the decision.
I have to get other people to carry the water.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And you also have to, and part of, part of what happens when, to your point about being the final decision maker, is learning how to carry the water in a way that the rest of your colleagues on council hear. Cause it doesn't really matter if the citizens all said they want X and planning commission said we supported X, council gets to say Y, it really does.
And reject it if we want to.
And reject it. And so some of it is, part of being part of a successful team is understanding not just the process that you know how to operate, but understanding how your council hears and communicates and what they want. And so one of the things I said early, one of the things I, oh wow, maybe I did this in my last training, we'll get to this. One of the hardest things to do in terms of coming to a council is not making up your mind before you hear all the information. Because the reality is, we probably know, we already come to a lot of our decisions predetermined, right? And so if you can get to a point where you literally are saying, okay, I think I know I'm probably gonna support it as it is, but I'm gonna listen to what this counselor has to say, because I know that she's studied it and she's super passionate, you have a chance to convince them in a way, because they should be more knowledgeable to a certain extent on the issue than the citizens who gave input and the planning commission, because you guys have to weigh everything. It's not just about, is it gonna impact my neighborhood? That's typically what the citizens care about, right? In a grand world, we would love for them to be globally concerned about the community, but let's be honest, most of them are concerned about their immediate impact. The planning commission is looking mostly at it, mostly from like a planning perspective or a traffic's perspective. The council has to look at it from every perspective. How is this gonna impact all of our citizens? How's it gonna impact this particular set of citizens? What did the planning commission and the planners think about it from a land use planning, traffic calming perspective? And what do we think about it from a fiscal, political perspective? So this is where, if you wait till the end of the process, which I hear you, seems like it's really friggin' length of the game.
It was a little bit like, ah!
I would be lying, I would be lying to you if I said, no, you're totally fine. It does feel like it's at the end of the game, because it is at the end of the game. But that's where you have the most power. And if you can give yourself a little bit of patience and not just focus on the process, but focus on how you communicate with the rest of your teammate and what they need to hear and what they need to seem to be convinced, you may not, you're not gonna be effective 100% of the time, not gonna.
No, really not.
Nobody is. But I think really effective teams who commit to listening to each other and really learning from each other eventually are more successful finding those group consensus decisions on a regular basis. And some of it is, this is jumping ahead, I worked with a mayor before in eastern Oregon and his council, he's been the mayor, I think for almost 10 years now, and his council in his tenure has only had one non-unanimous decision. And I was at a workshop with him one time and, this by the way is a very calm mayor, I've never seen him except in this institute rounding. And somebody accused the council of just being a rubber stamp for city staff because they'd had all these unanimous decisions. And he almost came unglued and he said, you see my vote, that's all you see, you are focusing on one vote. He goes, sometimes to get a unanimous decision, we only need one. Sometimes we need 10. He goes, we get unanimous decisions because we believe in consensus-based decision making. He goes, so not everybody is always happy with the end result, but we can all live with it. And he really said, what it means is that we're listening to each other, we're hearing, I can't support this concept, alright, I can't support this concept, okay, is there a middle ground? And he prided himself on having a council that was making consensus-based decisions. But it was about his strong belief that they had to listen to each other and then they could do that. That's where I think, but it's frustrating, not gonna lie.
And that's why, that's why we have work sessions.
Yep.
And that's why, it's really interesting now because we just started televising our work sessions here recently. But, you know, we've kind of been accused in the past of kind of being a rubber stamp council also because all the work prior to the vote was done in the work session and, you know, and you have maybe two people, you know, two citizens sitting in the, you know, sitting in the group, you know, beside staff. And so it's like, how can you make these decisions so quickly on this? And we say, well, we haven't.
Yeah, and that was part of our fault. What we really needed to do was before each vote, paraphrase what we had gone through the day before and focus on, so that people understood.
Yeah, because they just didn't have a clue.
I would like to speak to that. If you look at the council rules, I think it's rule number three or four, says work sessions will only be held when there's a large amount of information to be shared with the council.
And that may be something that we need to look at.
And yet, but you go back further, and I believe that should be the case. When you go back further in the council rules, there's another rule that gives the agenda for the regular formal council meeting and another one for the agenda of the work session. And it says in there, one of the agenda items is policy discussions. I'm not, I'm not a fan of that. I think that for the benefit of our citizens, like you're saying, they don't have a clue as to how things turn out the way they do in a vote. Because they haven't been dialing into the work sessions.
I'm not.
And I'll give you another example.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I just.
Pardon me?
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay, but, so that's why, if I would make a suggestion, I think we need to have our policy discussions on the record at the council meeting and leave the work sessions to, to really, those circumstances where a lot of information needs to come in and be given to the council, like the insurance matter of the other, was the volunteer insurance program and the committee insurance and all that. That's the kind of thing you do at a work session, you know? I don't think we should be having policy discussions at work sessions.
Well, but we have work sessions that we start at 4:30 and sometimes we're not out of here until almost nine o'clock.
Well, but other cities manage to get it done.
Hold on, hold on. We can't start a city council meeting at seven o'clock and then have those discussions. We're gonna get out of here at one in the morning. So the work session gives us the ability to banter back and forth and have those conversations. The citizens have access to it, like they've never had before. And there are times even, I mean, and Larry loves to have long meetings and even he gets upset.
Don't wake him up now.
Larry, Larry awake?
I think the work session gives us the opportunity to have those in-depth conversations like Bill's saying, and then it bypasses that rubber stamp act because we are having those conversations.
However, there are not meeting minutes kept of work sessions. And I think that, like I said, I think policy decisions should be on the record.
They're recorded, they're recorded.
There aren't any decisions made at the work session. So that's not an issue, but they are recorded.
They are recorded, you can watch all of them.
Also, I'm pretty sure that there's some stuff in the ordinances about the work session too. And this is totally a thing we should talk about in a meeting when we put it on the agenda.
So here's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of wrap this up. I think, so again, if I was gonna say we had some action items, I think you can move an action item to some of your process issues. So whether it's the rules of procedure, how do you set an agenda, what are we doing committees, when do we discuss policy issues, what are the parameters for our work sessions? You've got some really big topics and the reality is, I'm hearing the general consensus that there's probably room for growth and change. And I think that is something that you guys should put on an agenda item in the future. I would tell you, generally speaking, what I see when people start to look at their rules is they typically set up a committee of council members and staff to help them with that. At some point, you should look your lawyer in to make sure that your rules are legal. Generally speaking, that's not when you're already in a final draft because you could have already gone way off kilter and spent hours working on something she would have told you 10 hours ago. Something like that. When I've seen cities do it, they typically ask, they typically look at what other cities have done in their region and a population size. If you want that, the league can get that for you. I'm not trying to take work away from you, but we'll do it for free, you'll probably be.
That is true.
She's got plenty of it there.
Yeah, I have enough to do right now.
So stuff like that would be a good action item, I think, for you guys to look at.
Normally, small cities our side, 10,000 and less, how many meetings do they have a month normally?
It depends, it's changed a lot since the Supreme Court's decision about serial meetings.
About what?
Serial meetings and what those are, so.
Can you explain that?
Sure. So, sort of. So a serial meeting is a series of individual meetings between smaller groups of councils that equal a quorum and violates the public meetings law. So I'm gonna take everybody here for example, so, and he just walked away, so four, five, six, so you seven are council, okay? You can't have more than a quorum, right, unless it's a publicly noticed meeting, right? So that's four, right? So when most people think of that, they think of something like this, where we all get together. A serial meeting, which is prohibited, is the two of you on Monday have a conversation in the hallway, let's say about any dog ordinance. You're gonna limit the number of dogs people can have. So you guys talk on Monday, face to face about it. On Wednesday, you're emailing Counselor Slater, you guys are swapping recipes. And in the course of swapping recipes, he brings up the dog ordinance. And you two start talking about the dog ordinance via email on Wednesday. On Friday, he calls the mayor about some business stuff going on with the chamber and in the course of it, the mayor says, hey Tim, what do you think about the dog ordinance? One, two, three, four. You just had a serial meeting that was never noticed.
Without public notice.
Without public notice. And so until, and it's decided by the quorum, it's not necessarily statute. So until then, I would say, and that decision came out almost three years ago now, it was common for city councils, I would say 5,000 and under maybe once a month. Once we hit above 5,000, I would say it was probably every other week. What we've seen since you can't do serial meetings anymore because, and I don't think that people have those sidebar conversations to avoid the public, I just, I don't think everybody was trying to hide it, it's just how you did it, just how you networked and got business done. I've seen cities start. What I've seen more common for, I would say, cities between populations of 5,000 to 15,000 is week one and three are work sessions, week two and four are our actual council meetings themselves. Because, because you can't get the business done in those two to three pairings anymore outside of a publicly noticed meeting. So it's changed a lot in the last third years.
So work sessions are quite common?
Yes, they've been common in big cities for years. I mean, in bigger big cities, so like if you take like a city like Portland, they have a work session every week. They have a work session and a council meeting every week.
And is the intent to, like, to dig into the stuff? Like she was saying, we don't make the decisions there and that, but to dig into the content?
It really depends, I see it, I've seen it both ways. I would say that actually, I've started to see a lot of councils start the policy decisions in the workshops to decide how much work they need to do. And the reason is, is, so you have like an hour-long conversation about the policy and if it's clear, you're not gonna get a majority of the council on board, then staff's not spending 10 or 15 hours giving you preliminary data and research. So I would say it's both. I think it's morphing into, I think when they started, when the work sessions really started, they were much more technical, right? A lot of them were for land use decisions, right? We're gonna subdivide 30 acres and we've gotta tell you how we want this platoned and this where the cycle, all that stuff. Anymore, it's that plus it's some of these complicated policy things. There's been a movement, and I've seen this more probably in the central region of the state, where work sessions are kind of the opportunity for counselors to raise their issues or their concerns. So that's kind of like, okay, so everybody, every other work session that we have is really designed for counselors to bring forward concerns that may not already be planned out in the strategic plan to decide if we need to be taking them up in the end. But again, it's gonna figure out what works best for you, but I've seen an increase in work sessions since the serial meeting decision.
I mean, this is tomorrow night's packet.
Yep, yeah.
So.
That's only the part we give you.
Okay, I mean realistically.
The public hearing part.
Yeah.
That's the T S P.
And also on that note, cause it's, the minutes are not supposed to be verbatim.
Not in my opinion.
Okay, that's because I know there's been some questions about that and wanting to be quoted exactly. It's the, you know, so-and-so brought up this.
What the public meetings law requires is that it be a summary so that people have an understanding of what it is. So I'll give you some. The league is actually a government body itself, but people don't realize that. So if we were, say for example, discussing the executive director's performance review, that conversation may take 30 to 45 minutes. The minutes would say, the board actively discussed the executive director's performance during calendar year 2020. They issued, they filed a motion that his performance met expectations because of these three factors, see attached report for more details. The attached report would be, that would be the extension of a 45-minute conversation. If you read the attorney general's sample meeting minutes, that's the type of process they recommend. But it depends, I have cities who are members who really prefer it to be a transcript. I personally don't like that, one for two reasons. It's my experience, please don't take this the wrong way, that you all don't actually like to be quoted. That you don't actually believe that you said what you said and you don't like it when it's in black and white.
That's true.
Or an afford that big.
That's been my personal experience when we have to do transcripts. The second thing is, is it spends an enormous lot of staff time. And I don't know what it gets you.
And the average citizen probably isn't, didn't read through that. But if they can see the intent of the discussion.
I mean, I think you're kidding yourself when you think anybody outside of you is staff.
They read every word that I say.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few that will, but not, I mean, not really. Particularly now that most cities are also recording it. So you have a backup, right? Like most cities I know, you've got written minutes and you're also maintaining your audio recording. So if you have somebody who wants it, they can just get both.
Right.
That's just.
Could I mention just one historical note on work sessions, what we were using them for? If we go back, Lord help me, 30 years, the main focus of it was to facilitate going through items that are in front of you and identifying if there was information you needed to be able to make a decision. So it facilitated then the one day to get the information, bring it back to the council and therefore we could pass things. So the idea was to facilitate getting things passed, getting things done that way. And a secondary one was simply looking at issues or proposals or things, you know, like capital improvement plans for the fire department or something that way. But the principal reason was you had that delay to be able to get more information to be timely.
Yeah, and I think you also, this is one of those things where I think you would be being disingenuous with yourself if the work that your council did 30 years ago was probably not as extensive as the work that your council is doing today.
Oh, no.
It's just not. And so assuming that the process you had in place 30 years ago is gonna continue to be useful to you, it's also probably a little naive. Why a work session once a month may have been super impactful when you were passing maybe two or three ordinances a year, that's probably not realistic when you're expected to pass legislation every single week or every other week.
And I think it's correctly pointed out, the things you recorded, the materials there for people to see to be able to be part of. But I do believe that some explanation of the process that we've gone through the day before is valuable to our public as we go ahead and vote on something.
And I had a counselor once who would often say, so he would call and ask questions before we would go into meetings, which I always personally prefer. Like if you read your packet, you have a question, you can tell the city administrator, he can get you those answers before the meeting. There's nothing more frustrating as staff than knowing, if you literally asked me the question 24 hours earlier, I wouldn't have to stand up here and say, I don't know, I'll get back with you. But what he would often say, he was my council president, Tim would also often say to me, okay, I know you've answered all of my questions, I want you to know I'm gonna ask four of them again on the record because I believe that citizens have the same question and if I don't ask it, then they won't know it.[1718.04] And sometimes I would say, that's fine, do you wanna ask me the questions, or do you want me to build it into my opening remarks? And he would always say, no, if I call it out and ask the question, it gets more noticed. So I think that, that is, to your point, i- it's kind of showing a little bit of how this.
But you may have minimized those eight questions down to four.
Yep.
'Cause they all have.
Yeah.
Had the same.
Yeah.
But it shows consideration.
Sure.
Thought process.
So, we have an hour and ten minutes left.
Okay.
And thank you for.
Absolutely.
I felt like that was a good deep dive, right? Are we all feeling good about some of those questions?
Suzanne, I don't feel like you, you, you're the only one that's ever done anything wrong, because I can tell you that I've done a lot of wrong things, I've, I've done a lot of things wrong on the council. I've said things that I have been reminded of, it's like, why would you say that? So.
We're learning.
We all, we all learn.
Everybody does.
Yeah, I remember, I remember Jean's dad sitting right over there, when I start talking, he'd just start doing this.
Oh, I'm telling. He always tells me I need to make sure I watch my eyebrows because there's a camera pointed right at our table.
Oh, yes. My very first meeting ever, so I did not know it was a hazing ritual, I'm sitting in the front row, because that's where the rest of the yahoos on staff told me I had to sit, and I'm sitting there and we're, I don't do, I know exactly what they're, they're, they were discussing for over an hour and a half, adopting a resolution to accrue federal government to establish a department of peace to counteract the Defense Department. And I remember thinking, this is what we're gonna do for our actual city business, right, I don't even care if you like it, like, literally, like, it's been an hour and a half. And at some point, I got a text message from my boss who said, you have two choices, stop rolling your eyes, forget, off camera.
So I like slide eight.
Okay.
Is that what we're on?
Yeah, um, well, I'm gonna wrap, yes, so we can go, I'm gonna finish one thing left, and I can share this with you if you guys are here just now. How many of you have actually read your charter?
Actually, what?
Read our charter, I have a pocketbook charter now.
And your council rules of proceedings?
Yeah, at some point.
At some point, okay, what I, this is gonna sound like an incredibly boring exercise, but if I ask each of you how many powers you think you actually have as a council, what would you guess?
Mmm, powers, besides flying and.
Yeah.
Extraversion.
Visibility.
Yeah, what kind of power, like, like, do you think you have five powers, do you think you have fifty powers?
As a counselor or as a body?
As a body.
As a body.
One.
Two.
What, did Larry say one?
I heard you say one too.
I heard Larry said one.
What did Larry say?
One.
Larry, would you like, would you like to elaborate, Larry?
I heard the administrator.
Yeah.
We're policymakers, I mean, we can make decisions, but I mean, we're not, we're not the administrator.
Yep, so this is why I think you should do this, so this is an exercise I do whenever I come to a council, is I do two things. I take, I go through your charter, your municipal code, and your rules. You actually have, between your charter and your council rules, one more, seventeen affirmative powers as a council.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, and then you have additional, you have eight additional powers, but they're limited powers that you can utilize. Okay, I, I can share this with the city administrators, you guys have it. So you're right that you establish policy, but you also fill vacancies on the council. You are the final judge of the qualifications of your measure, of your members, so if there's a dispute at an election, it's not, it's not a judge who decides whether or not a candidate meets the qualifications, it's you guys. You, you know, you elect a council president, you get to direct city employees to attend certain meetings. There's certain things that you guys get to do that you often don't realize that you have, and then there's limits on those powers. So what I would encourage you, if you're open to actually doing homework, is to go through those and actually identify where those affirmative powers are and what those limitations are, because I think you'll be surprised. So I've never once gone to a city council meeting and they've all been like, no, I know exactly how many it is, because they don't realize the type of power that you actually have, now again, it's limited to the council, and when you go through that, there's gonna be limits on there, so, for example, like a simple one, it says, written opinions from the city attorney require authorization from the majority of council, but verbal opinions can be sought by any member. How many of you knew that?
Okay, say it again.
If you want a written legal opinion, the council has to authorize it, but verbal opinions presumably given during a council meeting can be sought by just one member of the council.
At a meeting.
At a meeting.
That's interesting.
If I wanted to write it down, it has to go to a vote.
Has to go to a vote.
Wondrous.
Right, so there's little things, and I, I know that some of them, so I will, I will, some of this may be me like, nerdy now and being a little bit geeky. But, but this is where your roles start from, this is where your power and your authority and limitations come from. And so when you do the pen-to-paper exercise and see where it is, then you actually get a sense of what you have and what you don't have. Your charter's obviously gonna be more broad, and then you, you know, kind of, you use your municipal code and your rules to either expand when there's lack of clarity or tighten it up when you want to, but you need to kind of understand what those are. For two seconds, we were talking about maybe amending some of your rules of procedure, this would be a really good exercise to see where the gaps are, or to see if you have power that you're like, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, right? Like, I'm a little uncomfortable with anybody being able to just ask for a verbal opinion from this city attorney on the fly, like, that makes me a little uncomfortable.
It might make them a little nervous.
Yeah, but any, I mean, I, I don't know you very well, but I'm assuming if she's uncomfortable, she's gonna say, I'm gonna need to get back with you.
Yeah.
So can I chime in? To, to put this in perspective, so, you're in, you were in the middle of a council meeting, and you were all talking about the levy, and the question came up on who can go out lobby, um, on this, staff or council? And one of you had asked the question in the middle of the meeting, and immediately, it's like, well, we have the city attorney go, so you asked for a verbal opinion on the fly, and you got one. The difference is, is that, um, a, if the council asks for an opinion that's a written opinion, or for instance, if I go and, and take an issue, it gets reduced to the body. So, the most disconcerting thing for some of you, I realize when you're brand new to council is, I don't understand this, why is he blind copying all of us on every time he responds to the body? But it was so-and-so's question, it's because you're not an individual, you're a body, and so a question from one of you, all of you get the same answer. Same thing on a written opinion, is when the city attorney is representing the institution, it's being reduced back to the body, not an individual. In the meeting, you know, she asks, and, and, and she's very, been very good, she'll say, I don't really feel comfortable answering that on the fly, let me get back to you. And so when she gets back to you, it's in writing, but the whole council gets the response.
Right.
Does that make sense? Does that put it in perspective?
It does.
And remember those nice orientation books that I made for you all?
Yes.
Everything's in there.
Charter and your rules and everything's in there.
I know where it is too.
Okay, just take a look at them, and I encourage everybody to read them at least once a year. Particularly if there's things that you don't like, I always had, um, I ask my council to always keep a copy, and then what I call the no copy behind it, so the clean copy, so they always know what they're actually looking for, and then immediately behind it, so if they had issues or concerns or suggestions, so the next time we were up for a review, so the next time we were up for a council review or up for a charter review, they didn't have to go back and remember this loophole that bothered them or this issue that bothered them two years prior, they already had a copy that they were already taking notes on.
Yeah, when I first got on council, I was actually brought in as, as, you know, to finish somebody's term that, that actually left the council, and I was voted by the council onto the, onto the council for a two-year, you know, internship, and same with Tim this last going around, 'cause he was the one that was next in line on the, for, you know, votes, so we, as a, as a body, voted to, to have him come back. So that's one of the powers that we do have.
Yeah, and it's a pretty big power, if you think about it, you get to, you kind of, you need, it's, the voters don't have a choice, right? It's totally up to you who sits that seat, so just take a look at it sometime. We will go on to the mayor, um, the mayor's role, so there's three key roles, um, generally speaking, for any mayor in this type of government. The first is that unfortunately, you are the public face of the community, good thing and bad thing, right? David's point, even though that you, your, your inherent power on the body is really no greater than anybody else's, except you have to be the parliamentarian, woo-hoo, good for you, exciting, it's a reporter. Everybody is going to assume that you do have more power than you do, so you're going to be the person they elevate to in terms of questions. It's most common as the public face, so that, you know, when you're opening a new dog park, you're the person cutting the ribbon. If it's Arbor Day, you're the person with the golden shovel who's digging into the dirt to plant the trees. That also means usually you're the one who's fielding media inquiries, you're the one who's giving most of the speeches. So you are the public face of the organization, and not just, it's one of those situations where it's not just the public face of that council, the public face of the entire organization is traditionally the mayor as well, and you'll see that in certain aspects, so I'll take my own. If you go to the League of Oregon City's meetings, ninety-nine percent of the time, time to cast ballots for who's gonna sit on the board, it's mayors casting the ballots for their cities. It's seldom counselors, there's some exceptions to that, a lot of times, if we've got a counselor who sits on our board, they'll let them do it. But most of the time, our delegates are mayors, because you are the face of your city. The other big one is, you're the presiding officer, uh, which has its benefits and its negatives, but you are supposed to be the primary person who makes sure that the meetings run on order, that everybody follows the rules, that if there's a question about what the rules are, you are the decision maker, subject to appeal by the council, they can say, no, we can't, we're all under Robert's rule of order. Typically, what I see because you're the presiding officer, is it's been my experience, and more often than not, you would meet more regularly with the city manager than the rest of the individual counselors, because you need to, to facilitate being the face of the community and being the presiding officer. So you typically have a larger say in agenda setting, in the order of business. It would be uncommon, let's say you had a hot button issue, and you're like, okay, I know that we typically limit public comment to like, five minutes, but we're gonna have eighty people show up tonight, we're gonna need to amend the rules and take that down to a minute, because we can't be here till three o'clock in the morning. You're probably the first person that's in, from the council that's looped into that discussion, so that's kind of one of your primary roles. Do you go to every meeting with city attorneys?
Easy.
Easy, that's okay.
I don't have Larry.
It's not so large, is it?
No, it's Larry.
Um, in my experience, if, if, this is lucky, 'cause you guys have a city attorney who's at the meeting, my experience is they're usually very helpful in the parliamentary role. You, like most councils, have some rules of procedure, but you generally default to Robert's rules of order, which are really cumbersome and really big, it can become quite difficult. So it's, I, as a city attorney, I've always had them say, Patty, what's it say? I don't know, let me look. But I do have my book, um, so you're there. You're also, and this is the one that I, I personally think is important, and it sometimes gets lost. I think the mayor is the chief facilitator, so not just amongst the council itself, but between the council and staff. So if there's a disconnect between Counselor Slater and Counselor Gleason, they should obviously try and work it out themselves. But in order to run successful meetings as a presiding officer, I think you have to try and facilitate a dialogue between them. How can we figure out what the issue is, what's the disconnect, how can we bring everybody back together? Same thing, if there's a disconnect between the city manager and council, you're kind of trying to help, all right, where, where's the gaps in communication, what are we missing? And I think that that sometimes gets lost in the shuffle, and it, 'cause sometimes it feels uncomfortable, right? Like, we're all grown-ups, we're all adults here, if they can't get along, they just need to leave the sandbox. But because we're part of a team, you are the team prima real captain, and so it's up to you to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and if not, figuring out why, which is sometimes the most difficult part of the job, to be perfectly honest. It's really an easy part of the job when everybody's getting along and singing kumbaya, not so much when we're about to have World War III, which hopefully doesn't happen. I did the same thing for you with your, with your charter and rules, how many do you think that you have, how many specific powers?
So we had seventeen as a group.
Yeah, I said seventeen.
So I'd say seventeen.
Can't be wrong.
Got eleven and then one limited, so a little less, which, which I think is the common thing. So I will say when I ask this, nine times out of ten, people think that your mayor has more power than the council has the body, but remember, not really, it's actually a very, very limited role, and so, it's, but it's a powerful role. Being able to set the agenda or set the order of business, and being able to decide who you have call on is pretty heavy power, right? But, that's why you don't want that many, um, take a look at, but take a look at it and see what it is. Anybody got any questions on that one? No, okay, so then we go to the city manager. I love your picture on the website, but I really do, I appreciate it that. So, the city manager is basically, the easiest way to say it is, he is your C O, CEO, he is your chief executive officer for the city. So how I like to, people say, explain the difference to me between council and city manager. So let's say the city council has decided it wants to take a road trip together. It's, it's gonna be, you all have not spent nearly enough time together, and you're like, we just need to get all together, and we're gonna take this massive road trip, and we're gonna be on the road for six weeks. Your job is to ultimately decide what you wanna see, so you're like, okay, we know we're gonna go east, so we wanna stop, and we wanna see Yellowstone, we wanna see the St. Louis Arch, and ultimately, we wanna end up in Key West and hang out, and like Jimmy Buffett likes to have a great time. That's what you guys have decided, and then you're done, and then he has to figure out, how the heck do I get them there? Do we need an RV, do we need a semi truck, what day are we leaving, how much is this gonna cost me, what hotels are we staying in, what precautions am I putting in in case the RV breaks down, what are all these contingencies? So you have a really.
How much are margaritas?
Exactly. You have all the fun stuff, he's the detail person, all right, it's his job to figure out how much detail we have. And as part of being the chief executive officer of the city, that means he's ultimately responsible for all the staff. So he gets to supervise them, not you guys. That's probably the trickiest H R snafu to figure out as a council, we talked a little bit about this earlier, like, calling the public works director about a potpourri. But you also have to be mindful about other things, whether it's a flip it comment. So for example, I know of a city where they got into some pretty decent financial trouble because a counselor after a council meeting was bad-mouthing, um, a lower city staff person. Now, they did think that they were alone, but they're in the hallway outside chambers, they're incompetent, this is ridiculous, they just need to be fired. I do not understand why the city manager keeps this person around. The city employee took that as a threat, because they looked at it, well, the council ultimately can fire or keep the city manager, and if they tell him to fire me, then he's gonna wanna keep his job, so he's gonna fire me. Now, in this case, the city manager did the right thing, and when the employee came to him and said, you absolutely don't have to worry about it, we'll talk to this council, that's inappropriate. But you need to be mindful that the only employees you really have any control over is Tim, and you're not a city employee, but the city attorney as well. And so you need to be mindful of what those interactions look like. There's usually a grace period, so if you've got concerns about performance, so, um, let's say it's the police department, you guys have a police department, right? So, let's say, for example, I hope this, I don't wanna say this, 'cause, okay, let's say you, you guys get a canine dog and he bites somebody. It happens, right? And you're concerned that, ugh, was the officer, like, the concern is, was the officer trained properly, should he have learned him though? That's not your concern per se, that's his job to deal with the police chief. But it might be appropriate to say, you know, we're getting a lot of bad press about this canine bite. City manager, can you at least assure us that there's been an investigation, and that you're following the protocols that have been put into place? That is appropriate to say, right? But it's up to him to do the investigation and decide whether or not there was a problem with the officer's conduct and whether or not they should be disciplined. But if you guys are up here saying, we think he messed up, we think this is really bad, and we think you guys need to look into him possibly having, you know, violated the rules and had some contact, then, then you're basically trying to tell him what he should be doing with his employees, and that's not your purview, right? There's a little, it's a subtle difference, but that's part of it. So when you do the stuff for the city manager, how about you, ask a little of your job descriptions, just so you know, so, how many?
I gave it to you.
I know. How many do you think that you have, you have more or less?
Powers?
Yeah, more or less than the council.
I have more authority administratively than the council by far, and more responsibility.
You're in the high twenties.
High twenties.
High twenties, and that's not uncommon. And so, when I've done this before, I once had a counselor say, but then you're lying to me, I don't have the ultimate power, the city administrator does. You get to shape how he wields his power, right? Because ultimately, his power is administering the city according to your ultimate plan and direction. So, you get to set the plan, and you get to create the box in which he operates, but then he operates in that box however he operates. That's how it works, but he is, because he has to operate more frequently than you, going to have a lot more administrative power than you guys can.
We tell him to go from here to there, but it's up to him to get from here to there.
That's why it's so important for our strategic plan.
Yeah.
And to stay, you know, it's just like a company that has a mission statement and a vision, and you start to do something, you have to say, wait a minute, does this align back up to the strategic plan? Because that'll be the guiding document that'll help us stay on track. I think actually, um, you know, we talked about like, maybe review, you know, like, rotating our policies and reviewing them. We actually talked about the strategic plan, and I don't know, I can't remember, I don't think it maybe made it this year. So like, if that was something all of a sudden that we wanted to do, it's like, it was on the radar. Maybe it didn't make it to the final draft of what the strategic plan is for this year's focus, but that'll be the guiding document where we bring it up again maybe next year, and we put it on the rotation.
Absolutely, yeah, and, and that's good to keep a change, and what I've also found is, it's not just another, if you have a strategic plan, but if the council is really committed to living by that plan, it actually almost prevents, um, kind of fracturing in discourse from happening, because you've already agreed where you're going, right? We've already, like, the hard part is figuring out where we wanna go, and if you're committed to that's where we're going, when these side issues pop up, as a collective, you're like, that's really interesting, we need to put that on the list to talk about next year, because we've already decided this is where we are this year. Now, you have to be willing to adjust, right? Global pandemic, might need to shift your work a little bit, but generally speaking, like, that's it, right? And so you can't, you don't have as much conflict, because you've already agreed where we're going, right? It's like, when you're, I mean, I don't know, I can speak to you, but like, when my husband comes home, and he's like, okay, we went out to dinner, where do you wanna go? I'm like, I don't know, I don't care, right? I don't care, right? Right, my husband says he's gonna open up a restaurant, it's gonna be named.
I don't know, I don't care. Suzanne, did you have your hand up, I didn't cut you off, did I, did you have your, did you have your hand up for a second there?
Oh, I was going to ask briefly, what's the difference between a city manager and a city administrator?
Typically, the city size.
I'm sorry?
Typically, the size of the city.
The size of the city, alright.
To be perfectly honest, um, I would actually include city reporters, in your smallest of the smalls, when you get to city populations of about three thousand or less, they're actually typically run by their city reporters.
I'm sorry?
They're actually typically run by city reporters, so a lot of your smaller cities, so when I, um, I know that you're a city manager, so I did my slide. If I was gonna do a generic training on roles and responsibilities, we would usually do city manager slash administrator slash reporter.
Yeah, Lake Side does that.
Okay.
Yeah, now, we don't have as many, obviously, employees, all right, and their budget is nowhere near as big. But it's not, like, the city of Daville is somebody I worked pretty closely with for another program. Their, their entire general fund budget for the year is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they have two employees, the recorder, the public works guy, that's all.
Yeah, that's it.
And so they don't need a city administrator.
No. So, do you think? No, so do you think if, if we were trying to sort of check ourselves, and maybe we think of something that we wanna talk to our city administrator about, and we're like, wait a minute, is that administrative? Or is that, is this policy, like, is there a good rule of thumb to kind of see, like, does it fit in this box? Like, is it about planning the trip or is it the RV? Because I know that if he gets messages from seven of us-
Yep.
All day long, check this, do that, talk to this person, have that person at the meeting, um, I can't imagine how he would get his job done.
So I don't know you very well, but I think he knows how to probably, my experience is most city managers are pretty good at managing their own calendar and knowing where that line is and pushing back and saying, you're playing in my sandbox, please get out.
He pushes back, that's okay.
Is that fair? I think newer city managers, managers struggle with it, so if you've got somebody who's newer, um, it's probably kind of like city attorneys. Like when I was fresh out of law school, I probably wasn't as willing to look at a mayor and say, no, you're not doing that, as opposed to now where I'm like, we're not doing that.
I highly suggest that you think twice about it.
Please don't.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, no, I'll just say no, like, no, we're not doing that.
No, yeah. So there's a wealth of training that comes probably through the League of Oregon Cities about telling.
And just experience, right? Like he, he knows what he needs to do and how to manage a staff. And it's also fair, like, in my opinion, I always used to say same thing, like, I think he's your policy person, your lawyers are your legal ones. I always thought, if you've got a question, I'd rather you ask me first, is this my role or your role? Let's talk about it and figure out where it is. Um, I, you know, in my personal life, I'm a big fan of asking for forgiveness and not permission, but in the professional world, I'd ask for permission first.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to run the hook.
Yeah, yeah. My husband's statistically unlikely to divorce me if I gamble wrong, so it's okay to ask for forgiveness. So that's what I would say about the city manager. So that, we've been talking a lot about this, but the, the third key element, once you've figured out that you wanna work as a team and you've decided to know what your role is, is to follow the rules that you have in place. This sounds really simple, right? Like we're just gonna follow the rules. The tricky part is, is when, particularly when we don't review and/or update our rules on a regular basis, is we modify our behavior to fit our needs, even if those needs no longer match our rules. So it's not uncommon for me to be working with the city and they have these really awesome rules, and then I watch one of their city council meetings and they're not following them at all. And they're not doing it deliberately or with malice. It's because somewhere between when they enacted the rules to this moment in time, they found a better way to do something. And so they're just doing it that way instead of amending the rules. Which, when everybody's going great and life's hunky dory is fine, but then when we end up in conflict, those rules that are supposed to keep everything in order become weaponized. And now, all of a sudden, I'm gonna use the rule against you in a point of order and I'm gonna take it out on you. Or we're not following the rules and a member of the public has filed some type of lawsuit against us accusing us of violating our rules. So it's super important to follow them. I'm gonna highlight what I consider to be the big five. We've talked a lot about these already. The first one is decorum. Most rules of procedure have some rule about decorum. In terms of not just the meetings, I'm also seeing a pretty big push, um, in rules, people, council trying to dictate conduct outside of it. Not saying like you can't do this or you can't do that, but kind of affirmative statements that you have, it doesn't matter if you're at the dais or if you're at the grocery store, people are going to associate you with the city of North Bend. You need to conduct yourselves accordingly, right? It's probably not appropriate to get drunk in a bar and have a fistfight and get arrested. That doesn't really look, I mean, I say that, but I, I can tell you at least-
It happened to one of my council members.
Yeah, I, I've got a, I, I know.
Navidale's days, George.
I got, I got older.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got older.
So I think you're starting to see a lot of decorum rules in there in terms of how it looks. And I would follow that up with, you're starting to see more provisions regarding censure. So when councillors don't follow the rules of behavior or they aren't being appropriately professional, the council as a whole are issuing censure orders as a form of, like, you're not representing us. You got drunk, you got into a fight at a bar and you've been arrested, you've made us all look bad. So the council's gonna issue a resolution of censure saying, not only did you violate our rules, you do not represent or reflect our values or who we are, and we're gonna publicly shame you. So you're starting to see a lot of those.
How long is that shaming period last? Just, you know?
It just, so there's only, there's only, I've only seen two or three council rules in Oregon that have what I would call teeth. Most of the time, it's honestly, it's just publicly shaming, because it's gonna get press. It's gonna get press, right? And nobody wants that. There's been a few, so the city of Roseburg actually put some teeth to theirs in the sense that their censure action, they will remove accounts, not only do they like the public humiliation, they'll remove that councillor from any committee. They will revoke, um, any travel allotment or continuing education, um, and they will limit, um, which, I don't know that I feel great about it, but they were limiting some of their ability to speak during council meetings. I've got some personal problems with that myself.
I was, yeah, 'cause it's like, basically, are you saying like, so you're still elected, but you can't play with us anymore?
Yes, yes.
And also, what about the people who elected you?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't like that. I'm fine with saying, we're taking away your travel budget and your committee appointments, but when you start telling them when they cannot, cannot speak, it's probably like that.
Yeah.
But they, what they were trying to do in that instance is, when I talked with their city attorney, they said, unfortunately, we live in a society where shaming is not nearly as embarrassing as it used to be because the news cycle switches so fast.
Yeah.
And so they wanted to, and they were a city who invests heavily in training, um, so they're, um, they're, they budget for their council to always go to like league events and some national events, and so taking a training budget away was a pretty, was a pretty big take. So stuff, I've seen them do it. Um, but generally, it's one or two news cycles. Then there's some exceptions. Um, I don't know if it made it here, but there was, um, the former mayor of Phoenix was accused of hitting a Black Lives Matter protester last summer, um, and his council censured him. That news cycle probably lasted about six or seven weeks. Um, it was a pretty big process down there, so it just depends on what it looks like. But I'm starting to see decorum, agenda setting, which we've talked about a little bit. Um, think about it, that's where I tend to see conflict arise, particularly when we've got, um, kind of polarizing councils. Ethics, so not just the state's ethics laws, which you all have to comply with, but what your council generally might need for ethical steps. So I've seen some rules of procedure that are much more explicit, not necessarily for city your size, but in the bigger cities saying that, for example, you, you can't be an employee, um, and an elected official. Um, there are some cities that specifically prohibit that. In some instances, it's not possible. Some of our smaller cities with less than a hundred people, it's just not realistic. If there's only one or one, only one person who could be the water treatment operator and they wanna run for mayor, really nothing to think about it. Um, but just generally, what do you want to regulate in terms of ethics outside of the ethics statutes? I'm starting to see those. I see a lot more specific language about not directing staff, um, or how you direct staff. So how many times can you talk with the city manager? When can the city manager tell you you're taking up too much time? What are the penalties if you try and indirectly or directly manage his staff? Um, I've actually seen charter provisions of late where it says that if you essentially cross that line, you can lose your position on council. It's considered, um, outside of the qualifications to hold office and they'll boot you out of council. Um, I've never seen it done, um, but it's there. I'm starting to see more of those in your rules. And then resource utilization. And by that, it's really more of how much of resources should you be using? So, um, it's common, I've seen a lot of city council rules where, um, they'll limit how much time. So a common one is with the city attorney is that each individual council has basically ten hours to ask the city attorney questions that they track. But if, once you use that ten hours over the course of the year, you're gonna have to get full council approval, or you can utilize the city, the city engineer for twenty minutes. Starting to see a, a, a utilization formula being built into the rules of procedure, just to try and account for what you individually do.
So on these, you know, the question of agenda setting has been something that I've been thinking about because that is, you know, you were trying to figure out how do we act as a body? But as individuals, we have ideas and things that we wanna bring forward. And so is that, I was talking to David about process of like, do we adopt the agenda? Do we all agree on the agenda? How do we, you know, and maybe he can kind of chime in here too, like what, how it officially stands right now? Um, because i- if it, if there is an agenda item, but it doesn't align with our strategic plan, I could see it fitting to say, I totally hear you, that you wanna bring this agenda item forward, but it's not the time.
Right.
What is the proper way to handle that?
So, so typically, right now, when I read your rules, the council could ultimately decide, so, um, so if she wanted to bring something forward and we said, it's not the time, it's not part of the strategic plan, the council as a whole could overrule you. I don't think that's particularly the most conducive way to do it. What I've seen actually, and I know they're a big city, um, the city of Bend's agenda, agenda setting process, I like a lot. Um, and what they've essentially done is they've allocated a period, uh, once a month, there's one work session a month where any councillor can bring forward any agenda item whatsoever. It's kind of like a free for all, like this one work session is where you bring it forward. The council kind of bats it forward, and even though decisions aren't made, when it's clear that there's a consensus, the city manager and the mayor basically under the rules are directed to get it on an actual agenda within, I think it's a hundred and twenty days, and so that it can be part of, and if it's clear that like you're, you're, you're talking to a brick wall, it's not gonna happen, you're not gonna get consensus, it's just considered dead and gone away.
Okay.
Um, I like theirs because they clearly thought about it, to your point, like, we've all got ideas, but we also have a strategic plan. Um, and they literally set aside, I've talked with their city attorney a couple of times, and she said, more often than not, she said, at least sixty percent of the time, things don't really end up on a formalized agenda because people go back to the strategic plan and like, we're not fair. She said forty percent of the time, something new has come up. Um, like she gave the example, like last summer, there were some issues with police reform, as it was with a lot of communities. That gained some traction, um, in terms of, I think, around maybe their body cam process or something like that, that made it onto the agenda. I know it's a big city and a lot of times I don't like to reduce it down, but I think they've got a good one. I, I, if I was looking at it, I would just pull a bunch of different cities and see what they're doing and figure out what's worked for them. There's probably twenty different ways to do agenda setting in this state.
Good point.
Um, but that's what I would do. You've done this, you're thinking and acting strategically, um, which is really good. I like your plan a lot. Um, I don't know if you did this, but we do strategic planning for organizations. I typically personally like to start with a SWOT analysis where we evaluate your community's current strengths, your current weaknesses, whatever opportunities you have and what threats you have. Um, I typically like to do that either the first half of the day or the first day of, we're doing a two-day training, a two-day strategic planning session. And the reason, some of it I do that is because I think a lot of time, we don't inherently focus on where we are with those four things because we, I mean, I think local government is a lot of times responding to emergencies, right? Like, oh, the sky is falling, the sky is falling. And what I've found is when we do an actual SWOT analysis, it gives you a better idea of how to plan long-term, right? Like, we may think that we have this huge problem with our parks facilities, but the reality is they're really strong. What we really mean is we just wanna pre, provide better opportunities. It's a really strong system already, we just wanna make it better. It's not actually one of our weaknesses. One of our weaknesses is actually with our sidewalk infrastructure, it's just crumbling and failing. Um, so we will do a SWOT analysis, and then we try and do what I like to call smart goals. And I think, um, Mayor, you, you said this before, and what I liked about your goals is that they're realistic, which is the whole point of doing a smart analysis, right? Um, and the first part of a smart analysis is, first of all, to make sure that you actually have a specific goal. Nothing is more annoying than when I see a city council goal that says, improve the city's parks program. That's excellent, do we have, think of more specific goal, is there a particular problem? Um, that they have to be measurable, right? What is the measurable goal that you're trying to achieve? Um, they have to be attainable. Things like money and staff resources are actually a real thing when it comes to goal setting, so you've gotta be attainable. Um, and then they have to be relevant, so it has to be a timely and relevant issue that you're trying to resolve. Um, and then the last one is timely. And when I looked at your rules, it looks like what you guys have done, have done a smart analysis, which I think is good. Um, I will see a lot of goal settings that are just, you're setting yourself up for failure if you can't actually do it. You just are, um, and then you end up with more disconnects. Participative decision making. I am a huge personal believer in this, particularly since councils act as a body. Um, and when I think of participative decision making, it really means everybody does in fact participate. And there's, there's four things that I really consider to be part of participative decision making. The first is that you have to allow for all relevant information to actually be shared equally. Um, I know that people sometimes get super frustrated with government because they think that we move slow, but I think it is okay that we move slow. I mean, you're talking about how you provide safe drinking water, you're talking about how we build streets, how many firefighters do you have, what type of weapons are we purchasing for the police department? You're talking about things that impact life, and so you've gotta give yourself enough time to share information. When ICC councils start to kind of lose the team barrier, it's when only half of the council have the information and they just move forward with it, right? Um, so I know the council, for example, they had a council vacancy that the mayor and two other councillors knew was coming up. They didn't share it with the council until the day of where that councillor resigned, and they went ahead and appointed his replacement the day of.
Come on.
And while that was certainly within the permissible rules for that city, I don't think that they've recovered and that was four years ago because the pertinent information wasn't uniformly shared, and it really just set a bad tone. Um, the other one is that all members of the team are really encouraged to share their ideas and opinions. Um, and this ties really closely with the next one, which I like to call step up and step back. The reality is on any team, there's usually the talkers, the people who have no problem raising their hands and saying, I'm happy to share, I'm one of those people. Um, and then there's other people who are a little bit quieter or more reserved. And in order to be truly participative, the people like me who are chatty Catholics, we need to learn to shut up sometimes and listen. We don't always need to be the first people to speak, it's helpful for us to be quiet. And those people who are really quiet, um, a lot of times, all we, all we hear them speak is when they vote. But we don't hear why they're voting, why they're voting, and then we're not really participating in the decision-making process. So you really have to make sure that everybody participates, and because you're a team, if you've got somebody who needs to step up, then as a teammate, you need to say, you know what, I really haven't heard from you, Councilor Slater, on this issue. I would be really interested to see what you think about it. Um, and if you're somebody who talks too much, it would be perfectly appropriate to say, Councilor Richardson, um, I know that you've already given us two or three comments, would you be willing to kind of see the floor so we can hear from other people? It's not meant to be disrespectful, but we're not gonna all be part of the same team if we don't share ourselves equally. And the last one is that decisions are made by consensus. Consensus is not that we all love it, consensus is that we can all live with it. Um, so when I talk about consensus, if I put it in my family context, when my husband and I got married, um, we had to decide how much money we were going to donate to save. I think the man is insane and he wants me to save so much money that I wouldn't ever be able to like buy a cup of coffee because in his world, we're gonna magically retire at fifty-five and then apparently live life really large. But in the meantime, I'm not gonna live in a nice place and I'm not gonna go out to coffee and we're never gonna travel, no. Um, he, however, thinks that what I would save is beyond insanely too small, like that we're gonna have to work until we're a hundred. And so when we got married, we are both saving amount that we are equally unhappy about.
Yeah.
Neither of us is mad about it, neither of us is annoyed about it, but neither of us is super happy about it. And I think that's the best way to describe consensus. You don't have to love it, you don't have to be excited about it, you don't have to champion it, but you can live with it. Nobody walks away super angry, but also maybe not everybody walks away super excited. Um, that is consensus-based decision making. Um, and usually what I think of is the right decision. I used to tell my council, which was usually pretty split, I would start a lot of my presentations with, my expectation is that none of you will leave here excited, my hope is that none of you leave here angry. And if we can find that sweet spot, then we pick consensus and we're out of doing okay.
Do you have, just real quick there, do you have any good kind of taglines to say when, you know, people come up to us in the community? And we, we have these real hot button issues right now, whether, I mean, it's probably the same in every city, right? Something about a park, something about a pool, and, you know, there's been a few of us that have, uh, you know, had some questions or maybe committed our vote one way or the other. And so what's a good way to, what's a nice response to say, like, well, it was the decision of the council? Is that a nice kind of neutral?
I, I think it's really fair to say, you know, it was the decision of the council, and I am a member of that council and I stand by the council's decision. Um, you don't have to agree with the decision, but you should stand behind it and support it. And so that's how I always like to say it. I'm, I'm not going to say that I agree with the decision I don't disagree with, but I will stand by my team decision. Um, 'cause I think that's what being a teammate is. And so that's how I always would encourage people to phrase it, is there was an open process, everybody was free to talk, I got to share my ideas, they got to share your ideas, and at the end of the day, it was a decision of the council to do X, and I stand behind my council's decision.
Right, and move on to the next agenda item.
So flip side, from, from your city manager's perspective, I'll give you an example. When we went through the whole dispatch discussions, alright? So the police chief was very passionate about that, okay? So on my side of the curtain, um, the police chief is asking me, why if, if you believed in your heart all along that the right thing was to keep dispatch here, why would you allow me to go to the council and do all that work to get option A, B, C, and D? Because the council asked us to come back to them with the cost-effective way to do dispatch. Doesn't mean that it's the right way, but it's what the council asked us to do. And sometimes it's hard for staff to sort of step aside and say, okay, but I disagree. Yes, you can disagree, but they're the decision makers. And so you have to give the council all the information and hope that they come to the right decision and who's to say what the right or wrong decision is, but the power still goes back to the council. And so in my heart, I felt, I saw all the data, and I felt pretty confident that dispatch was gonna stay here, okay? But it didn't matter what it was. If you all said go out, we, we were prepared to go out because we did all the, the work. So I had to go back to the police chief and get him to the position that he understood, we have a job to do, I have a job to do. The question that came, although not from this council, the previous council, was a mandate to come to us and evaluate our- mandate to come to us and evaluate outsourcing dispatch. So there's always that other side to it, if you will. And so you'll see me ask in a work session, a consensus. You're not committing, I did it, for instance, with the levy. I need to sort of kinda get a consensus before I send staff all the way down and get all that work and invest our, our city attorney and spend all that resource. If you're not really convinced that you wanna go that route, does that make sense sometimes? Is that, we'd much rather, you know, we don't wanna, you know, work harder, we wanna work smarter. And so I wanna throw our resources at the direction the council ultimately, and so I'm constantly reading tea leaves, if you will. It's why I, I, I try to talk to you all individually and then collectively, is because my staff knows that when I'm talking to them, it's like, well, I don't exactly know what the council's gonna decide, you know? I might have an idea, for instance, I was talking to the water board today, and I said, you know, I haven't heard anything negative about the water board appointment, so it probably will go through tomorrow. We'll see, okay? If I, you know, 'cause part of my job is, if I'm hearing negative, I need to get on with the, the, the water board and say, okay, this might look like it's going south, let's engage a little bit more, okay? Because part of my job is to help that gap between the two bodies, if you will. And so, so, so that's that other side of, of the role that I'm playing. So that's that consensus. And I know some of you have raised your hand saying, well, hold it, we're not supposed to be voting. You're not voting, you're not committing yourself. You're giving me feedback to go do my job. Does that make sense?
Well, I honestly think that whole dispatch exercise was, was a great exercise. I think it kind of opened everybody's eyes, even, even the police chiefs, of how many people do we need? How many, you know, I, I'd like to see the per capita deal and figure out how many cops we really need, but, yeah, I, I think it was a great exercise itself.
Other thing, I wanna go down this a little bit, to just, to me, this always happened predominantly with city attorneys and then your engineers. I would say this with my council, you, you pay, for example, I would have my council say, I don't like your opinion, okay? And I would have councillors say, you need to change it. No, 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 my opinion is my opinion, I have to do what you say, I don't, but you don't need to tell me what my opinion is. And I would often run into that with my engineers, too. The engineer is telling you that you don't need a stop sign, like, literally, he's done the traffic count, done the spooling, did all that, you do not need a stop sign, you will make it worse. But if you as a council say, no, we're gonna comply with what the neighbors want, and we're gonna put in a stop sign, the engineer's gonna put in a stop sign, but the engineer's never gonna think that the stop sign is necessary. And I think that's part of the rub as well, is it's true for both us going back to staff and being, I've been disappointed before, right? I've been like, wow, I did not see this coming, this is not what I would recommend. You know, back, I, one time with my mayor, he wanted me to do something, and I said, we're gonna end up soon, this is gonna cost us all this money, he said, I'll tell you right now. I was like, if I'm wrong, he's like, I'll come in and I'll tell you, I told you so. Well, twenty-four months after extensive litigation and about thirty-seven-five thousand dollars in damages, we were finally done. To his credit, he did walk into my room, he sat down, and he looked at my face, he said, you told me so. Never say that to me, and he got up and he walked out. But the point was, is, there are certain professionals, whether it's your city manager or your engineer or your city attorney, because why do you give me the opinion? You don't have to like their opinion, I encourage you to respect it and acknowledge it's based on training and experience, but they also have to walk away understanding that you don't need to tell them what their opinion is, but you also do need to tell them what the action is, if they're gonna take it, you know?
Right.
I think Stephen Senior would always say, like, this is my, this is the opinion and the advice, but you don't have to take it.
Yeah.
I advise you to.
I had another, it's funny that you were saying, I would just tell them, no, we're not doing that. I had, I was taught always to let my boards know that it is always their decision, but it is my opinion that the wisest course would be X, and maybe less wise course would cause, you know, why we need.
And I look at it, there's a difference between when I talk to the city council versus a committee, I always look at it this way, my job is to represent the organization, not necessarily the people that are individuals. So, for example, I, we had to amend our sign ordinance because it was unconstitutional. The US Supreme Court did not rule on our ordinance, it ruled on one that's exactly the same, it was unconstitutional. I had three councillors, one of them actually said, I disagree with the United States Supreme Court, I don't care. And at one point, I looked at them and I said, you cannot change the ordinance, city staff will not enforce it. Like, that, that is just it, because our job as attorneys is to represent the body, and the body cannot be allowed to violate people's constitutional rights. So you vote however you wanna vote, but the mayor has already said, and he was in charge of staff, we're not enforcing an ordinance we know is unconstitutional. And so there's these push and pulls. And to, to be clear, they all three, it was a nine-member council, they all three voted no, because they knew that they could, right? Because the rest of them were gonna
It was gonna pass.
Do what they needed to do. It was a corrupt test vote. The other, we've got a little bit of time here. So another key thing is effective communication. I will say, I think you guys are all communicating very well, just based on what I've seen here today, like, you seem to be honest, like, you were saying, you've got an elephant in the room, and everybody talked about it respectfully and politely, which is super good. But I think, one of the things, this is one of my favorite slides, I will be super honest, I stole this from Instagram like a couple of years ago, because I think it's true. There's a difference between dialoguing with one another and debating with one another. And I think it is so easy in politics to just go to debate, because that's almost what we've been programmed to do, and debating one another is the exact opposite of effective communication on a team. And so, I'm not gonna read the entire list, you guys can do that yourselves. There's a few on here, though, that I, that I really think are important. The first one is that you need to be prepared to critique not just the other side's position, but your position as well. If you really are in this together, then you've gotta be willing to admit that there's probably flaws in your position as well, or if not flaws, at least weaknesses, right? And you've gotta be willing to open those and say, you're right, there's probably some gaps, there's probably some weaknesses. So keep everybody's idea, including your folks' other ones. The other big one that I really like to highlight is, we've gotten to a point, I think, particularly in politics, where we are almost trained to look for the differences we have with each other, and that is nothing but debate. That is highlighting where we are different, where we disagree, and where we are apart. And when we're dialoguing with each other, we're coming at it from a place of, what do we have in common? Where is the agreement? Because it probably exists, even if it's super, super tiny and small, there's probably some level. Even if, what I like to say when I work with councillors who are in crisis, I will always start with, why did you run for office? And so far, nobody has told me something obscene, like, I want empowerment, or I wanted to be on paper, or something like that. So far, everybody I've ever asked that question to is, I really care about my community, or I wanted to do something with it. That's at least something you come in common with. So when you're talking about contentious issues, if you can at least acknowledge that you're all doing it because you believe it's fundamentally better for the community, that's there. And the other one, in terms of debate and dialogue, is the difference between creating a winner and loser dynamic versus we're just trying to be open-minded and by consensus. The reality is, you're gonna have split votes, right? There's gonna be a four-three split at some point. If it hasn't happened, you're right, it will probably happen. The important thing is, you didn't have four winners and three losers. That, that's not the mentality to go into it. I've worked with councils who literally say, it's not my fault they can't win a vote. It shouldn't be a contest, right? This, this isn't supposed, you're all supposed to be on the same team, you should be competing with each other. Sometimes, sometimes your position takes the day, sometimes it doesn't. What I've seen really effectively done by, by mayors and other councillors is, when those four-three splits happening, is reaching out. So the people on the foreside are reaching out, saying, you had some really strong arguments, I'm really sorry we couldn't get there and find some consensus, but you know what, this discussion alone made the overall process better. It's reaching across the aisle and making it clear that even if the end result wasn't unanimous, there was benefit in where we got to. But when you make it, you lost, ha ha, it's just not working. That's what I like to think about there. The other one, I know this is kind of small, is blocking behavior. I think, again, this is super, super, this is super prevalent in politics because it's easy, and there's certain behaviors on there that just tend to happen. I'm gonna highlight some of the ones I like overanalyzing. I say this as a lawyer who overanalyzes everything. Every year I fill out my ethics commission report because I sit on my historic landmarks commission, and every year I overanalyze the heck out of the questions they're asking me, and it takes you way too long to answer five frigging questions. But when you do it as part of a body, it's blocking, right? So you're, you're nitpicking, and you're wordsmithing, and you're, you're using the rules, well, is that really what the rules meant? Is it really when you're supposed to have a second? Can't we dialogue before we do this? When you're doing that, it's a stalling technique, and you're really blocking the actual substantive conversation that you need to have, so be mindful of that. The other one is when you overgeneralize things. What I like to say with this one, when I do platform design communication, is, how often do people always do something? Or do they never do something? When you use words like, you always call on me last, mayor, Steve. Our mayor, he never appoint me to the committees I've asked to be appointed to. Is that true? Is it really always? Is it really never? In some respects, those two words have almost become equivalent to when somebody says, with all due respect. It's really like, when you say, with all due respect, it's kind of the equivalent of verbally flipping you off, right? And you're clearly, like, nobody takes that well, right? Like, everybody who hears, with all due respect, you're being prepared to be consulted, right?
With all due respect, you're an idiot.
Yeah, but see, that's still sort of sweet, right? Like, that's still like, you know?
I mean, the same thing is a sound.
Anything it does. Oh, with your argument, you're so stupid. But always and never are starting, in my opinion, to have the same buzzwords, so don't overgeneralize. Probably always don't do something, probably don't never not do something. The other one is what I like to call the resisting one, the second one. Are you, ask yourself this, is your first position always no? So I'm not naming names, I work with an employee, I love this employee to pieces, but every new idea is automatically no, no. There's always, there's always a reason why it is just not possible. And, and maybe there really isn't, but the employee never starts from a position of, even, maybe, it's possible, I don't know, I've got some concerns, but maybe, let's think about it. And when you, when you always start with no, at some point, people stop wanting to work with you because you've closed yourself off, and if you're not gonna work with each other, you're just not gonna have effective communication. I am somebody who has a tendency to do a lot of these behaviors, I don't know if it's the litigator in me, probably, or maybe I'm just inherently obnoxious person, I'm not sure. But when I, so I said, I sit on my historic landmarks commission, and I, I struggle with that commission sometimes because I'm a practical preservationist, and most of the commission is just, they would conserve anything, which drives me nuts. I actually have a printout of these that I put to my laptop when we have our virtual meetings, and I used to take it with me because I need a visual, visual reminder not to be this person.
Not, not to be which one, the?
Most of them. I will dominate, I will analyze, I will, I mean, I will really do all of these behaviors. And I think some of it is, when you look at a lot of these behaviors and you look at the previous slide, they're very debating. And that's, some of it is, is I think, I think it is, I, you know, I litigated for fifteen years, I was a primary litigator for my city, I think some of it's that, and some of it is, is because I think I'm a type A personality, and in my heart of hearts, I do, despite years of therapy, believe that my way is the right way. And I know objectively that's not true, but when I'm being honest with myself, I do believe that my way is the best way, which is not conducive to team.
There's more than one way to be right, just so you know.
Exactly, and, and I can realize that, but in the moment, I'm being honest, I struggle with it. In the moment, when we're actively, like, trying to do something, I will have a tendency, if I don't have a visual reminder, to start this behavior, and so I'm somebody, if I have a visual cue, I will stop.
Okay. So question for both of you, 'cause I, I, in running a meeting, I wanna make sure that we are honoring order and process and Robert's Rules of Order, but then sometimes I remind myself, 'cause I'm like, okay, like, are we getting too in the nitty-gritty? Like, do we really, you know, with some of the details as far as, like, the way that the minutes are, and do we need to request a motion? Like, the, the mayor and the council, we still, like, as, in, in my position to lead the meeting, I still have discretion sometimes of where we could say, I'll let this person have the floor, or not have the floor, or whatever, right? Like, is it still, what am I trying to say here? Like, rules are important, but it's okay sometimes to say, I'll have discretion and we'll let councillor Wesson talk about parks just a little bit longer.
You have a rule for that.
I was gonna say, the rules, a lot of Robert's, a lot of Robert's rules, the reason is it's so huge, is because there's an opening for just about everything.
Okay.
So, yeah, probably you can. There's really only four questions that we get over and over and over again about Robert's rules.
Well, we've, we've had a lot of conversation about, were these minutes, you know, is this verbatim, how was it kept in the minutes? You know, some of the, the concern about, like, was this a vote? The council still is the deciding factor, right?
And so some of that, so here's what I, what I hate about Robert's rules, is we are under the mistaken belief that that's what you have to do. And, and even if you read Roberts, it's very clear in Roberts, that you can make your own rules, and then default to Roberts when your rules don't cover it. So when it comes to things like minutes, or should the chair be allowed to have discretion to let us wander down a little rabbit hole, you can make your own rule that says that that's okay. And I, I wish more councils would do that, because I think there's just this misconception that you have to follow everything that Roberts does. When Roberts itself says, local custom can be a real thing, and you can write a rule that says that you follow local custom.
Well, and I was thinking, too, it's the, it's like, like, not to sound like my sixteen-year-old, but the vibe of the meeting at the time, right? So if it's like, you know what, we, we can't go down that rabbit hole tonight, we have to stay on order, I'm gonna keep it all to three minutes, and we don't have time for this right now. Sometimes I feel like a little bit of a jerk for saying that, but, like, sort of redirecting, but at another time, there might be a moment where you could kind of do that a little bit, and say, we're gonna take a moment of discretion.
I, yeah, I think it's your job to make that call. The only thing I, I, and this is just me being super paranoid, is, if you are somebody who occasionally says, I'm feeling the vibe, we need to work this out, let's go down this rabbit hole, maybe when you're done with the meeting, do some self-analysis as to what triggered your desire to do that, because you don't ever wanna be accused of, you know, heaven forbid, playing favorites, so to speak, right?
Or putting something on the agenda that...
Right, like, you know, whenever it's Jane group commerce who wants to talk about something, she's super willing to kind of let it go, but if we're talking about social justice issues, she seems inclined to be, like, militant about how it is. And because, because there's facts and there's perceptions, and I, I'm somebody who believes that even if the perception does not mirror the fact, if that's what your community believes or your councillors mean, you still have a problem, because the perceptions can muddy the water.
Got it.
So just, I think it's perfectly fair to go off, but just do some analysis with yourself and just say, okay, did, would I have done this if it was a different person, a different group? What, what am I thinking when I'm, when I'm willing to do it? Is it really just the nebulous vibe? Or is it because we had a light agenda, right? The only thing we were really doing today was a couple first readings of the ordinance and approving some past minutes. So we didn't really have a whole lot of thought-provoking work to do, which is why I was like, yeah, that's fine, we're good.
Okay.
Right? That's clear.
That's how we leave early.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. So we're almost done, because I know we're almost out of time. So we talked a lot about consensus, but another key element is consensus-driven decisions. And there's a couple key things with consensus-driven. So they need to be inclusive, and again, that means that as many key partners should be involved in giving you feedback when you make those decisions. be involved in giving you feedback when you make those decisions. Um, now, I think that inclusiveness can be taken too far, right? You can't poll every member of your community before you take every vote. Um, but there are certain big ones. So, like, if you are going to redevelop, redesign, or update your development code, I would suggest, maybe, if you have active neighborhood associations, you might wanna look them in in advance. Chamber of Commerce, your downtown businesses association, your realtors, your major property developers, these are people that you should just intuitively, maybe not throw it on them, right? Maybe sit down and get some feedback before you start ramming this down people's throats. Um, participatory, participatory, I always have a problem that way. Everybody should be allowed a chance to contribute equally. Um, and what I mean by that is, some of it's also process, so I've seen this in terms of, and what's a hard role is, when you have those people who, who don't really step up easily, is almost kinda having to gently force them. Like, okay, you know, every counselor has spoken out about this, except for Councilor North. If we haven't really heard from you yet today, it's really important to me personally that I hear from you, that you tell me what you're feeling about this, 'cause your voice matters. Just make sure you do that. Um, collaborative, it's gotta be, any individual can submit a group, um, but everybody has to be open to the fact that it can be modified, like, it's not your personal stake, right? Like, yes, I care about this deeply, but my opinion is just as valid as somebody else's opinion, as somebody else's, and we've all gotta, so we've all gotta work together and collaborate to get the best result for it. Um, you need to be agreement-seeking, so this kinda goes back to, we're looking for how we all get to yes, not starting from a place of, no, 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 I hate it. Where's the agreement centerpiece? How can we make this work? Um, and then cooperative, which is the hardest part, um, because cooperative, to me, really means that we're focusing on what's the benefit for the city, not what is personally beneficial to me, which can be super hard with some of the topics that we sometimes have to talk about, I'll be personally honest, right? I mean, I'm, I have an opinion on just about everything, except farm subsidies, 'cause I've never bothered to research them. Otherwise, pretty much have an opinion on everything, but it's not, doesn't matter what my personal opinion is sometimes, I've gotta think about it, what works best objectively. So, for example, I, if I'm looking at this from a employment context, um, let's say the entire city, like, the city manager was thinking, you know, I don't know if we're really structured from a staff perspective the right way, so he brings all of his supervisors together, and it's like, I'm thinking of reorganizing divisions or staff and how it works. That's a hard exercise for a lot of department heads, because our inclination is, I'm really comfortable where I am right now, thank you very much. I don't want you to create a deputy city manager that I have to report to now instead of you. Or I don't particularly want to give half my staff to the public works department, I like where I am. But cooperative agreement means, I'm cooperating with the government as a whole, and we're sitting at that. When, when my husband got promoted to fire chief, he asked me for some advice, and I said, there's two types of department heads. There's the type of department head who, when they ask who they work for, says, I work for the City of Bloomington Fire Department. And then there's a department head who says, I work for the City of Bloomington. And those are functionally different. Who do you work for, and who do you represent, and that's how you become cooperative. It's not about your individual interests or your individual silo, it's about the collective and how we cooperate together. Uh, I don't think that's as hard for elected officials as it is for staff, personally. Um, shared ownership, we talked a little bit about this in the beginning when we talked about teams. Because you are going to be judged as a team, you need to share in the ownership of it. Um, I won't belate this again. You don't have to agree with it, but again, it goes back to, I support the decision of my council, I support the decision of staff, I support what we agree to, even if you don't full of it, or like it, or even agree with it, you can still support the decision. If you're gonna be judged by your group decisions, you need to share in those decisions and all the feedback you're doing. Evaluating your work. Um, I agree that elections and the results of them can be an evaluation of your work, but I think it's short-sighted to assume that that is a comprehensive evaluation of the work that you have done as a council. The reality is, if you do a forty-five percent water rate increase in September, and you all do not get reelected, it's probably the result of the water rate increase, not everything you did a few years before. And so, when I say, value, yeah, don't do a water rate increase right before election, but when I talk about evaluating your work, just a little self-preservation there. Um, when I talk about councils evaluating their work, and I'm not immune that this is a timely and sometimes cost-effective, it's, I think it's good every once in a while to do community surveys, and if you don't have the resources for that, if you have community-wide events. So, I have a small city that I worked with for a while, um, they had a farmer's market every Saturday from like April to October, and they would have me at counselor booth at every farmer's market, and they would take turns having a different counselor or mayor be there, just to get feedback, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? And it wasn't as objective as a survey per se, but they're getting feedback from popular places, about, you know, it's a popular destination, it brought in lots of different people, and you can find out what you're really doing right and what you're really doing not so right. Um, I'm just not a huge fan of relying solely on the election, because I think people vote for a variety of reasons, and they may not actually know what your work product is that you've been doing. I think it's also appropriate to break it down. Um, so, you know, if one of your strategic goals is to invest heavily in your parks or redesign some parks facilities, I think maybe it's a good idea that, you know, if you've got a big massive parks facility, you know, three or four months later, maybe have staff do some surveys at that parks facility. How's it working? What's it going on? You know? If you've got, you know, a new indoor gym facility and you're running basketball camps out of it, ask the parents, what's working, what's not working, did we get it right? But get some feedback, so that you know, it's not, you're not just in your home head. I think that's an important process. And the last element of the ten is what you're doing today, which is continuous education. Um, I'm not just saying that because I want to use the league services, but because I think that helps. Where you are today may not necessarily be where you need to be in three years, and there's new techniques and styles. What I love most about local government is, nine times out of ten, somebody else has dealt with the same issue you have, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel, somebody's already gone through this issue, and even if you decide to do it differently, you can learn from their mistakes, and you can learn from their successes in it, and so you should do that. And there's good ones, right? I think if you wanna go to the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference, I think it's great, although I personally think, um, what you get most out of it isn't the actual training classes, but the networking with other officials, to be perfectly honest. Um, there's small cities meetings, there's other, you know, if you have the funding, you know, I think some of the national league of cities opportunities are great, um, because I don't think Oregon has all the answers. You know, there may be a coastal city in Connecticut that's got some really cool things that would be really applicable to what you're doing in North Bend, and the reality is, you're not gonna hear about them unless you go to a national training. But the more you can do continuous education, I think the better off you are as a council. Um, I also think it's personally helpful when the whole council is committed to it, recognizing that everybody has their own work schedules and family schedules and different stuff. Um, so, even if it's, you know, the mayor has more bandwidth, so she's perfectly fine to go to a training for a week in Texas, because that works, but you've got tiny little kids at home and your spouse is gonna kill you if you leave them with them, and like, or maybe you just go to a day training somewhere so you can come back. I, if long as there's an involvement and a dedication that we all have continuous, um, education, I think that makes your council better as a whole. And that's my last one, and pretty good, 'cause it's five till nine.
Good, good. Good job. So, does that mean we have five minutes for questions?
Yes. We can do a little bit longer if you want.
Yeah.
The longer I'm here, the less emails, the time I have to spend responding to emails when I get to the hotel.
What kind of questions does everybody have?
I ask all mine.
Yeah. Did you, Susannah, did you feel like you got some good answers?
Oh, yes.
Good.
Definitely.
Good.
Yep, thank you.
Does it help to make sense as to how I respond to you all sometimes now?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, when you reply back and say, yes, yes, I get it now.
Yeah, it's a, you know, I mean, I, I gained a lot from this personally, because, you know, in the last several years of, you know, with, with a different mayor, different council, you know, I, I, it was more of a relaxed atmosphere, kinda loosely following the rules and, you know, a lot of discretion, you know, for time slots and this and that, and, you know, to me, this is, this, this gives me a lot more precise, you know, direction on where I need to be and how I need to conduct myself, you know, with the public especially, because people are constantly asking all of us questions, you know, our, our opinions, you know, and, and that's, that's why I, I mentioned the, the, the media the most, because that is the easiest way that, in a slippery slope to go down. Because, you know, I mean, i- if you get one person to comment on something, they're gonna run with that, and then, and basically, you know, if I was the person that did that, they're gonna basically say, well, you know, the, you know, councillor so-and-so said that, you know, this is what we're doing and how we're going about it, and really and truly, if I haven't had a conversation with, with every one of you in this, in this room, and we all agreed on it, that I was gonna be the person to speak, then, you know, I'm defeating the purpose of the, of the, of the body.
And that's particularly true before you vote. I would say, I do agree, I think the press wants to know what your vote is before you do it, but if you really are committed to being an active listener and hearing the other side, I mean, again, I, I will speak for myself, nine times out of ten, my opinion probably isn't gonna be changed, 'cause I like to think I've done some research, but if I'm really committed to being a true team player, I really need to listen to everybody before I officially make up my mind, and if I tell the newspaper what my, what my vote's gonna be before I've done that, it's kinda disingenuous to say I'm sitting in the meeting, listening actively and considering your options.
Well, just to touch on Bill's comment there, you know, I'm definitely in support of getting our pool opened up, and, but I'm not definitely in support of having to answer a whole bunch of questions to the media, so, you know, my, me and my wife's form of supporting the, the situation is, we've got support our pool signs coming, and we're gonna put them out around the city. Uh, that's way easier for me than to answer somebody's questions and then say the wrong shit and thing or something, you know?
It's easy to do.
Point taken, yeah.
And there are a lot of different roles that way, you know, whatever you're comfortable in to push those things forward, that's, that's the way we actually get the whole message out, you know, as we go back to, what is each person's individual strengths as you see them, and it's the whole that actually sells the ballgame.
Right.
So, that's excellent. Driving signs in the ground.
I appreciate you making a point about, like, is it, are you held to a higher standard, and do you not necessarily have a voice in a way that you used to? And is, does that not seem fair?
Oh, it's not fair.
It's not fair. But it's the way it is.
It's not fair. But I don't get it differently. I mean, nobody, so, and I, I'm literally not trying to make this a political, so please, I'm not, don't take it as a position statement. You know, there was a whole issue with the former president, should he or should he not release his tax returns? Um, and I was talking with somebody, said, yeah, but you should, why? I mean, you have a private citizen. I personally believe that once you run for office, certain things are fair game. I think you should know what I spend my money on if I get to decide what contracts, that's my personal opinion. Um, I think it's absurd to assume that you will not have impositions on your personal life and your ability to be free, but nobody forced you to run for office. Um, I look at it, I mean, and there's things you have to do. I mean, I never thought it was fair, I, this, this won't make as much sense if you're not familiar with the middle, counties are a lot smaller in the Midwest, like Indiana, I think like a third of a size of Oregon, we had ninety-eight counties. Um, you could drive across my county in twenty-five minutes. Um, but I got, I finally switched gyms to a different county when somebody stopped me from swimming laps in the pool, because they wanted to talk about something they[1558.83]